Good broadcasting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is November 16th, 2021. I'm Norma Martinez-Rubin, and I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Pinot City Council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the U.S. Military Troops? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloney Land, the land that Pinot sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Here.
Councilmember Tave?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Noting for the record that Councilmember Tom's is absent this evening. City Manager Murray?
Here.
City Attorney Kasher?
Here.
Assistant City Manager De La Rosa?
Here.
Mayor and Council, the agenda was posted on Friday, November 12th at 12:00 p.m. with all legally required notices. A revised report was subsequently posted and distributed for Agenda Item 11A. No written comments were received on Agenda items in advance of the meeting. Does the Council have any conflicts to report on any Agenda item tonight? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no closed session this evening, so we move on to the Agenda, to the portion of the meeting that is for public comment by all citizens. During this time, you may join our meeting via Zoom webinar, and the ID number appears on the screen, 893-3500-0272, or by phone, 1669-900-6833. When I open the comment period, if you wish to speak, if you're using the Zoom app, use the raise hand feature, please. If by phone, you press star nine to alert staff that you'd like to comment, and then you press star six to unmute, once you're called upon. So during this portion of citizens to be heard, citizens may speak under any item not listed on the Agenda. The time limit is three minutes and is subject to modification by the mayor, by me. Individuals may not share or offer time to another speaker pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act. No action may be taken on a matter unless it is listed on the Agenda, or unless certain emergency or special circumstances exist. The City Council may direct staff to investigate and/or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future council meeting. Madam City Clerk, or Deputy City Clerk Stone, are there any persons wishing to make public comment?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor. We do have a couple of public comments. We'll start with Cordell Henler.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, good evening, Mayor Rubin, City Manager Mur, I'm Phil Richard, and I have some Christmas gift to give the public. You are cordially invited to attend a performance of Home for the Holidays at Contra-Casa Civic Theater on December 3rd through 5th at 7:30 p.m. Tickets are $40 for a dog, but if you get the youth fee, it's $20. Group vaccination is required, and you wear your mask inside. That's one. And then, number two is another Christmas gift for you all. So, I would like to put in a request to have Kent Kirk to come speak to you all at your next meeting, to best the home element for homeless population. I figure that would be, it's very appropriate, because we're living in a times that we've got to think about the need for homelessness. So, and then, the last thing, as I was going to say, last time, we had an item on the Agenda regarding the tree lighting ceremony. I think it's a wonderful idea to have this year, because it will be nice to see the community outside after 18 months of COVID. So, that being said, I will see my balance for when we get down to the recognitions, the consent calendar, and a good be on the Agenda.
Rafael Menas?
Greetings, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of the public. So, I have a few comments tonight. First, I would like to thank the Pinot Historical Society, the Boy Scouts, the city, at least in part, and various other groups for holding an excellent Veterans' Day event this past November 11th. The weather was lovely. It was great getting to hear everybody speak. There were lots of good speeches, in my opinion. Not just, you know, your standard focus on patriotism, although it is important to note patriotism on Veterans' Day, but also some focus on the costs incurred by our veterans and the ways in which we failed them in our broader society. It's important to reflect on that, on Veterans' Day in particular, because there are many things that we could be doing for our veteran population, especially our homeless veteran population, as several speakers noted, but are not. Secondly, although a lot of my comments under this item are going to fall more under a later item on the Agenda, when Chief Whitehead is going to be talking more about the outcome of today's County Board of Supervisors meeting, one thing that I noted at that meeting is more of a general topic that I thought would be appropriate to bring up during Citizens to Be Heard, was that for public comment in the meeting, their process was to promote each commenter to panelist as they came up for their comment, to give them two minutes of time, and then remove them from being panelist at the end of the time. And that allowed for those commenters that chose to also broadcast in video as well as audio if they felt like doing so. And it didn't seem like that caused any particular disruption to the flow of the meeting, or above and beyond, you know, the usual technical difficulties of using Zoom and people running into issues with that. So, I was wondering if the city of Pinot is going to be continuing with its hybrid model, whether it would be void to consider taking a similar approach of promoting commenters to presenters for the duration of their comment, and then demoting them again. And that's all for Citizens to Be Heard for today. Thank you.
Roy Swerjen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to begin by thanking the volunteer citizens and the city employees of our community who volunteer and work on our citywide events. I think this is something that maybe we don't realize how important that is to our entire community, and these volunteers should be definitely noted as their contribution to our community, and it's a large contribution. Trying to look past Mayor Pete Murray, who heads up the Coastal Cleanup Project every year and has so for 20-some years, and all the citizens and organizations that come out to make our beaches and streets cleaner for all of us to enjoy. Bob Kopp and his committee that sponsored the Pinot Car Show, and that's enjoyed by over 2,000 Pinot and surrounding community citizens. Bob Kopp, Maria Picasso from our Recreation Department, and the Pinot Community Service Commission, who with their hard work on both dumpster days, took care of over 300 vehicles that were just from Pinot and dump stuff at our dumpster days. We had two of them this year. To Republic Services for providing dumpsters, and the job they did this time was outstanding. Everything, this is smoothest one we've ever had, was this last one that we had. Like to thank Jeff Rubin and his committee that work on a Veterans' Day project every year, and put it together so that the veterans are recognized, and in due course, we realize their contribution has been to our freedom. And each of these events could not be have put together without the assistance of the Pinot Public Works Department employees. They are always there in the background silently, doing what needs to be done to make our community events run smoothly. And we don't realize what that contribution is. Sometimes you think about it, oh, that was a great, great event, and thanks to so-and-so for doing it, but you don't realize these people are always making sure that it's just a fit. And that was really shown at the car show, how much their input was. Thanks to the Police Department at the car show for their input and all the information that they gave out to the people of our city. These are examples of what community service is all about. It's not being self-serving, it's serving the community. I would like to read a quotation from an unknown author, and I don't know the author. "You can protest policies, our current government, or anything else you choose, that is your right. But when you protest the flag and anthem, you're insulting the nation we all live in and love, and all those that have been injured or have died to keep it free. There's nothing you can do or..."
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Everyone is on a three-minute timer, and so we lost the last several words from the last commenter, but I think we heard the gist of it. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Next on our Agenda, we have no proclamations tonight. There is a presentation or recognition, rather, on employee recognition. City Manager Murray?
Yes, thank you. As you know, it's our practice to periodically provide updates to the council and community on some new arriving employees, employees that are taking on new roles at the city, and as well as employees who have retired and left the city. So, next slide, please. And these are organized by department. We have hired a new police officer, Amy Newbanks, and we hired the two full-time community services officers that the council authorized, Zach Gang and Chantelle Michel. In the City Clerk's office, as you know, Roxanne Stone, who previously worked in the City Manager's office, was promoted to the position of Deputy City Clerk. Congratulations, Roxanne. A lot of changes in community development, public works. As you know, as part of the reorganization, we're undergoing, the Development Services Department has been split into two departments, Community Development, Public Works. Our former Community Services Director and City Engineer, Tamara Miller, retired after five years of service, and her official retirement was in September. Her last day in the office was in July. We have a new wastewater treatment plant operator, Garrett Wass. Jamie Aldred, who had been a building permit technician, was promoted to a new position, Public Works Specialist, back in June, replacing a junior. We have two new permit technicians, Connie Kim, who is a returned employee, worked with us a number of years ago, and Joanna Nunes. And as you probably know, and was, who participated in our last City Council meeting, Lily Whalen, who's our new Community Development Director, who started at the beginning of November. In the Fire Department, a number of new employees and promotions, in part due to some of the positions that the council authorized. Javier Lopez, one of our previous firefighters or engineers, was promoted to captain. Eric Holt, who had been a firefighter, was promoted to engineer. And we have three new Fire Academy graduates who have now joined us, is firefighter paramedics, Andrew Porwin, Daniel Houts, and Kyle Metzler. So, I just wanted to recognize those employees, congratulate the folks who got promoted, welcome the ones who are new to the team, and offer a thanks for those who have put in years of service and have retired. And that's it for our presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Murray. So, at some of the community events that were mentioned earlier about one of the commenters, I had the pleasure of meeting the new firefighter paramedic employee. A couple of things were very noticeable. People are getting younger and younger, and the other is the boldness and the eager enthusiasm they have in serving Pinot. So, I appreciate all of the above. And congratulations to all the persons having been promoted. And thank you again, everyone, for being part of Pinot for as long as you were. And don't go too far. You know where we are. Okay, thank you. Next on the Agenda, Consent Calendar. We've got several matters. And I will turn to Deputy City Clerk Stone to find out whether there are any public comments, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have a couple of comments. We'll start with Cordell Henler.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to comment on the employee recognition. I missed that item. I wanted to speak on that item. I wanted to speak on it, if that was possible. Because I raised my hand for the employee recognition, so I wanted to thank City Manager Murray for his, for all the people that have been promoted and been hired. So, that's one. I just wanted to thank them for that one. And then, let's see, what else? Oh, yes. Let me see. Oh, shoot. I just said it up. On seven, on eight E, at the last meeting, Debbie Long brought up a good point regarding the having the meetings, you know, like go back to in-person. I feel that is a good thing, because I want to see faces, too. I've not seen the council like in 18 months. So, I figured that it would be better that if we can stay on this for just for one more month, and that hopefully that everything would go correctly, if we're allowed back in the chambers again. So, if there are like some certain protocols, I'm okay with it. It's just like, for example, like the city of Berkeley, they're in the process of doing like a hybrid model. So, I'm thinking that we can do the same thing, you know, like follow in those footsteps. And I said, that's a good idea. So, I like the consent calendar, so hopefully the council will approve it, and I'll just leave it at that.
Rafael Menas?
Sure. So, I have a brief question about item, let's see. Item 8E, yes. The item states that, this is on page... Well, it states in a few different places, both in the resolution as well as elsewhere, that the project will consist of seven very low-income units, 135 low-income units, and 35 moderate-income units. But if you look deeper into it, on page 19 of Attachment A, I think it is, or page 80 of the Agenda packet for qualifying rents, it says there's rents for the seven very low-income units, and there are certain formula. Rents for the nine low-income units, again, a formula. And then rents for 10 of the remaining low-income units and moderate-income units will be set in a formidable rent. And rent for the remaining units shall be set at the maximum rent levels for housing development that receives an allocation of tax credits. So, what I'm wondering is, is that maximum rent clause for the vast majority of the low-income units and a significant proportion of the moderate-income units compatible with them being low and moderate income units, as such, like does the understanding of the resolution attach to that part of the qualifying rents description? Or is the qualifying rents description override the rest of the resolution? And that's my question for 80. Thank you.
Debbie?
Actually, I have my hand up for citizens to be heard. So, if I could be heard at some time during the council meeting for that, I'd appreciate it. But I had two items under the consent calendar. And the first is 8C, the continuance of the existence of local emergency. And I thank you for putting this, once again, under the consent calendar. The entire council amazes me as to how they choose to continue to do business at the detriment to the citizens of Pinot. On page two of the staff report, paragraph two, it states that the rate of new cases over the last 14 days in Pinot is approximately 24 new cases per 100,000. Since Pinot's only a city of 20,000, it would appear that in Pinot, there have been approximately four cases. Certainly, this report was written in a way to persuade people that there remains a crisis in the city. If that were so, why are people going about business as usual? Certainly, most of the population is continuing to take safety measures through vaccines, testing, and masks. Why then can't the city of Pinot do the same for council meetings? Several of you were at Veterans' Day, and it was packed with people, most with masks. Speeches were given, all without a mask, yet no one worried about the mic being contaminated with possible COVID. Most people were closer than six foot, yet it was deemed safe, perhaps because it was outdoors. But in reality, we are no less safe indoors with others, as long as appropriate precautions are taken. However, I think the second to the last paragraph on page two is the most telling as to why the power over the people won't be relinquished. An emergency declaration is usually necessary for the city to access certain types of state and federal emergency funding. I am assuming that you respect the almighty dollar over the transparency of having open meetings. Nothing I say will make a difference, because all of you have the power, and you certainly yield the power by your actions. I will end with this. You can go to work, you can shop, you can have your haircut, you can go to the movies, you can go to the amusement park, you can travel on a bus, you can walk through an airport, you can fly in an airplane, you can stay in hotels, you can attend holiday venues, but you can't have open council meetings. You are hiding from the citizens and the questions that we have. And then, I wanted to make a comment under item 8E, and perhaps someone can give me clarification. When I was on the council, we could not have any more senior housing that would be applied to our RENA numbers. Now, we're looking at affordable housing there. Is that going to be able to be applied to the RENA numbers? Has that changed? I haven't heard about it, but I've been off for several years, and there have been changes. So, that was my question regarding that particular housing. And whenever I could, I'd like to speak for about a minute under Citizens to Be Heard.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, rather than have Miss Long wait until later in the meeting, can we just have one minute for public comment, please?
Sure. Ms. Long, can you unmute yourself?
All right.
Go ahead. Ms. Long, you're still muted.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, good. Veterans' Day Memorial and the flag retirement ceremony, it was just a great event, again. This was begun in 2008 by the Pinot Historical Society, and after 13 years, it is still an emotional and inspiring event. I did notice there was someone new in attendance, and that was Councilman Murphy. I was both confused and surprised, happy, since he does not stand in honor of the flag at council meetings, yet he stood in attendance during the presentation of the American flag by the Knights of Columbus, the playing by the Pinot Valley High School marching band of the Stars angle banner, the singing of "God Bless America," performed by St. Joseph's Goldstones, and as well as watching the Boy Scout Troop 86 conduct the flag retirement ceremony. Councilman Murphy, have you had a change of heart? If so, I hope your respect continues to be shown at the council meetings and stand for the flag. If not, I would consider that hypocritical, because you were there then, only for a political display. Thank you.
And Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. So, we're returning to, I did not explicitly state having closed the public comment period earlier, so this is a closure of the public comment period from earlier. We can return to the consent calendar. And one more, one more look, please, Deputy City Clerk, for any public comments under Consent Calendar?
Yes, one virtual hand just popped up. It is a telephone caller, last four digits, 5748.
Caller, you there?
Come.
We're back to Consent Calendar, please.
Caller, you will need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Like the previous caller, Ms. Debbie, I also have to say I've been having technical problems on my end or your end with the star and the pound and accessing public comment, as well as item 8F. And can I tie them together within two or three minutes, both? And just, since you're on 8F slash closing public comment now? With, hello?
We are on public comment now for items under Consent Calendar. Can you please go ahead? If you had a comment or question related to item 8F?
Yeah, but I, like Debbie, I couldn't, I couldn't access and get in with public, under the regular public comment. So, I'd like my time of day, just like Debbie Long did and Roy Swerjen did in the last meeting. So, I think you owe it to the public under these trying times to try and let citizens to be heard have a minute or two of time, you know? I don't know why you're so strict like that. I'm just asking for two or three minutes on 8F and our public comment, and they both kind of go hand in hand.
Sir, go ahead and comment on item 8F.
Okay, well, 8F regarding the, I know it would have something to do with the presentation that's going to be made with Police Chief Gang and/or the City Manager with regard to the contracts with Motorola. But being that the city is going to spend $61,000 on cameras, on those kind of body cams, I would like to know if there's any money in that budget, or the budget allotment X that the county's working on, or the city or federal government for enhancement of the rest of our security cameras in and around Pinot that the police gave a report on a few years ago, but we have never heard from them or the City Council since. And I think we need, as the public, to be updated on that because of all the problems going on, the highways and crossroads and major corridors like Fitzzero Drive and 18 Way. We have something like 20-some-odd or 30-some-odd cameras that were mounted on telephone poles and buildings. And the last detailed report the City Council gave to the public in their meeting a few years ago was that they were all, a majority of them were out of order. And so, we need funding to bring those cameras up to date. There were only like 11 or 17 of them that were working, and the police also reported, like they didn't care or it didn't matter, because even though they had the cameras working, they weren't going to be able to use them in the courts to levy charges on people that are, you know, doing bad things in our city. So, I would like the chief and/or the city manager to comment on those two related points. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you for your comments. Thank you. So, thank you for your comments.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn to council now. Council members, are there any items or matters that you wish to have, that you have questions about under consent calendar? Councilmember Tave, are you about to raise your virtual hand? No, okay. All right then. I will turn to staff to respond to the comments from the public. There were several.
Sure. So I'm happy to take a crack at the last comment related to the Police Department Security Camera System. And I'll ask Lieutenant Avery to jump in to add additional information if needed. So there was a presentation provided to the city council some time ago around the time that our former Lieutenant Gene Alameda was retiring, talking about a closed-circuit security camera system that we piloted primarily up on Fitzgerald. That's actually unrelated to the item that's being discussed and considered this evening, eight F. Eight F is about encryption of police radios. There are multiple new federal standards related to data security, including related to public safety communications. So to meet federal requirements, we need to add some encryption to our radio communication system. That's what that's about. I don't happen to know the status of the closed-circuit security camera system, but if the member of the public who provided that comment would like to contact me, I'm happy to provide him with an update. And then I'll ask Community Development Director Waylon and our Planning Manager Hanam to respond to the questions regarding the affordability agreement for the Vista Woods Apartments, about which I think there are two questions. One was, what's the relationship between the rent limits and the number of affordable units? Actually, that's the question. Oh, and the other question was, what's the relationship between senior units and RENA numbers? So Director Waylon, if you would, please.
Thank you, City Manager Murray. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to see you. I will have our Planning Manager Hanam talk about the agreement question, and we might need some assistance from the city attorney's office for that. Regarding the RENA question and the senior housing, my understanding is that we will be able to credit those units to the RENA. However, we will be taking a close look at that through our housing element update and will advise the council if our understanding is incorrect.
If I can add to that before Mr. Hanam joins, I wonder if there might be some confusion. There are restrictions on how many senior units the city can use its former redevelopment affordable housing funds on. So we could only invest our remaining affordable housing funds on a certain number of senior units before we must invest them in other types of units. So that's a different matter from what credit we can get via the RENA process for affordable senior units.
Okay, thank you, Madam. Yeah, regarding the units and the affordability, affordability is really set by the Health and Safety Code. So a lot of these numbers that you're seeing are numbers that there's no real, we can't, the property owner nor the city can really set. They're set based off of the, off of the section 500, 53 of the Health and Safety Code. So as part of the low income, modern income, and very low income, those numbers are set usually when the county gets the annual income and that. So those numbers, there's no mixing of those numbers, and they are what they are, so to speak. So there's really a change in that.
If I may, oh, sorry, Mr. Hanam, just a point of clarification. There are two different metrics being discussed there. One is the number of units that are designated to be occupied by residents of certain levels of income. There's something separate, which is the maximum rent that the property owner can charge the occupants of those units. So there are two different metrics that are being discussed and relevant to the affordability of units.
Right. And because there are two different metrics, the rents are really set by what we call the adjusted median income for the county. So the 112, all of those are based off of that number. So depending on the number of units, the unit count can change per se, but the rents can't. So if they were to apply for additional units in the very low, the rent distribution would have to be accompanied by the rents for the nine, for the low income of 112 of the 30% times the 60% of the area median income. So that's how it's kind of, it's, 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 sorry, I joke, but that's how it's distributed. So the rent, no matter how many units, and Alex, maybe you might want to help me out on this as well, if I could explain that.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. And I think Rafael's, Mr. Manis's question specifically about the language referring to the allocation, you know, rents that are consistent with the maximum rent levels for housing development that receives a tax credit. There are a range of rents that you can meet in order to get tax credits. They are all affordable, but there's a range, and you can make distributions a certain way in order to meet that. This project is 100% affordable, and so under state law, when you're 100% affordable, you need to dedicate a certain percentage based on the standards in the Health and Safety Code and then the other rest of it based on satisfying the same requirements as a tax credit. So that's why that language was here. The other element here is that Pinole, the city has a requirement in its inclusionary ordinance that at least 15% of the units be affordable based on certain standards. And so the first part, you know, that six units be for very low income and then nine units be for low income, that's based on the requirements out of our municipal code in our inclusionary housing ordinance. And the rest of the requirements are based on the fact that they got a density bonus due to the fact that they were 100% affordable.
Okay, I think all questions were answered, but I have one related to that same matter, eight E, the Vista Woods Apartments. What I was looking for after seeing the number of units by, that are going to be allocated by affordability or, pardon me, yeah, by income level, I wondered about the type of unit, so the size of the unit allotted by affordability level. And that's not explicit in the agreement, and I wondered if that was intentional, and I wanted to understand that. The bit that I could gather about that appears on Exhibit B, which is under the area of unit mix, rent, and occupancy restrictions. And there's a statement there that reads, "Very low-income units, low-income units, and moderate-income units will be dispersed across the various unit size types in approximately the same proportions as the overall unit size type allocation." Now, I just heard something by Mr. Hanam, which might explain why that isn't any more explicit, that the number of units can change, but rents cannot. So help me understand, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to make better sense of is, how many of the studio apartments are going to be designated as low, very low, or moderate? How many of the two-bedroom apartments are going to be very low, moderate, and low, for example?
Yeah. And that's a great question. It's actually something we talked about with the developer and the developers team. So they, the units will be broken up so it's proportional, so that there's not, you know, a disproportionate, you know, all of the studio units won't be the very low-income units and all of the, you know, two-bedroom units won't be the moderate. That range will reflect the same range as the overall unit distribution for the project. When we have a project that's only partially affordable, you can sort of lock in those types. You know, if there's only 5% of a project being affordable, you can lock in those types because there's a lot of excess units to deal with. But here, for example, if you have someone who's in a very low-income unit and they get a raise at work, and suddenly now they don't qualify as very low income, they're in low income, that will throw off the numbers a bit. And there's no excess unit because every unit is occupied by an affordable, all of the units are affordable. And so that's why we've simply included the more general language that they're going to be roughly equivalent to the overall allocation because over time, you know, there may be some small discrepancies as individual household incomes change. And until there's a vacancy, you can't, there's not a way to sort of readjust back and on.
Okay, so it's in the interest of some flexibility, it seems like. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, any other questions before we ask, I call for a motion to approve all matters on the consent calendar? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? I will second. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you. Noting for the record that Councilmember Tombs is absent, Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tave?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Aye.
Mayor Martham is Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, public hearings. And we have this evening ordinance adding Chapter 8.10, Organics Reduction, that Recycling Ordinance to the, adding that ordinance to the Pinole Municipal Code. And the action before us is an introduction of this to wait the first reading and to conduct a public hearing. City Attorney Keshar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, city council, staff, and members of the public. I am going to, well, you already know, our Assistant City Attorney, Alex Wild, he will be presenting this evening. There's a PowerPoint that, thank you, David, for bringing up. And so our Assistant City Attorney will walk us through the PowerPoint. I'll be available, will be available to answer any questions afterwards. Misha is also here and worked closely with us on this ordinance. And so I'll let Alex go ahead and handle the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor, council members. David, you could go to the next slide, please. And this is a small thought, but I know that the council has heard about SB 1383 before. So hopefully, this first slide is just setting the stage for the ordinance we're going to talk about. But the SB 1383 refers to the Short-lived Climate Pollution Act of 2016, which establishes methane reduction targets as part of the city, excuse me, the state's goal of reducing greenhouse gases in an effort to fight climate change. There's, you know, two, for our purposes, two relevant targets in the law. One is a 75% reduction in the disposal of organic waste that goes into landfill. So, you know, food scraps, other things that are compostable. Reducing the amount that goes into compost as well as a 20% increase in the amount of edible food that is recovered so it can be used and eaten by other, you know, people rather than being thrown into the trash. CalRecycle, the law puts CalRecycle, which is the Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, in charge of implementing SB 1383. And as part of that law, they have adopted a wide range of regulations. And those regulations, among other things, require the city to adopt an enforceable mechanism to carry out some of the requirements of the regulation. The easiest way to, you know, implement an enforceable mechanism is to adopt an ordinance. So that is what Pinole is doing, and that's what, you know, most cities in California are doing as well. Next slide, please, Dave. So the font on here may be hard to read, but the key thing to know is we're supposed to adopt a regulation, an ordinance by January 1, 2022. CalRecycle has indicated there's a little bit of leeway on that, but if the city doesn't have an ordinance in place, you know, soon after January 1st, it risks being fined by CalRecycle. Then there is a period of mostly implementation of the law, you know, educating folks, getting everything set to go. And then enforcement will incur, at least the city won't have to take, you know, any enforcement action until 2024. So not, you know, after two years of educating everyone about the requirements of this law. Next slide, please, Dave. So before we dive into the ordinance briefly, like I mentioned, it's required to be adopted by January 1, 2022. The ordinance addresses some of the requirements of SB 1383, but not every requirement. It, a lot of sort of the internal requirements for the city are not addressed in the ordinance. So for example, the city has a lot of procurement requirements that we're talking about briefly at the end. Those aren't addressed in the ordinance because, you know, they'll be addressed in other means. So we shared this ordinance with Recycle More, the West County JPA, as well as Republic Services, which as you all know is the franchise hauler for solid waste for Pinole. Recycle More had no comments for public services, had a number of comments. We tried to incorporate as many of those as possible into the ordinance, but there were some that we decided not to incorporate for various reasons. The main reason generally be wanting to keep the ordinance as flexible as possible for the city. Since we don't quite know how implementation will work, we want to make sure that the city, the ordinance gave the city as much flexibility as possible. And since this is a statewide requirement, every city and the state, more or less, is adopting these ordinances at the same time. We have been in contact with colleagues in other cities, have reviewed their ordinances as well. And our ordinance is fairly similar to other cities' ordinances. Many, if not most, cities have used a model that CalRecycle put out as a base, and that is what we've done for the city here as well. So next slide.
Really quickly, just, Alex, I just wanted to interject. I also wanted to mention that the Municipal Code Update Subcommittee did review the ordinance as well. So I want to thank Councilmember Tave and Councilmember Tombs for their review of the ordinance that also incorporated some of the comments that were provided by the republic. So it's been heavily vetted at this point.
Thanks, Eric. So, well, just a high-level overview of what is in the ordinance. And these are all based on the SB 1383 regulations that CalRecycle generated. But ordinance contains a number of requirements for generators, you know, which would be, you know, single-family homes, multifamily complexes, and commercial generators, you know, people who generate trash recycling, you know, organic materials. And there are a few just high-level things. Some of these are not new for the city, but they're incorporated into the ordinance nevertheless. So everyone is required to sign up for mandatory collection service with our self-haul, with our, excuse me, with our franchise hauler. There's a limited exception for people who are going to do self-hauling. But self-hauling is when you haul your own materials, your own trash, to a facility that has been approved by the city. You cannot hire someone else to do it. You cannot just pick it up and drop it off wherever you want. But there is that limited exception, but this is not new. This is already something that's required in the city. There's requirement generally that generators source separate materials. So that means what we hope everyone is doing already of putting trash into the trash, recycling into recycling, and, you know, compostable materials, including, you know, food scraps and other compostable materials into the compostable bin. There is, there are some exemption waivers that the ordinance creates for, you know, very narrow circumstances, if there's not enough space for all of those bins. If there, you can show that you don't generate a lot of one type of waste, the city has the ability to give you a Um, if there, uh, you can show that you don't generate a lot of one type of waste, the city has the ability to give you a waiver. Um, but the waivers will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis and, you know, we wouldn't expect to be approving very many of those. And, uh, last thing I want to point out is just, there are some additional requirements for commercial generators, um. For certain aspects of the law, commercial generators include large multifamily complexes, um, five or more units would be a. Commercial generator, but some of those requirements, um, are that wherever they provide a trash receptacle. Um, they need to also provide a recycling and a, um, compost receptacle, so. If you're a restaurant and you have a trash bin in the corner, you need to have a place for someone to throw away their recycling in the recycling bin and a. Um, you know, the food scraps into a compostable bin as well, next slide, please. Um, and like I mentioned earlier, a big part of, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three is to try to recover more food, and so. The law includes some requirements for both edible food generators as well as, um, food recovery services, so, uh. Edible food generator and those are people who, um, produce food that's edible or produce themselves, so those. You know, grocery stores are edible food generators, uh, restaurants, um. Food production facilities are edible food generators, they need to ensure that their excess food is safely recovered. Um, so that it's not going into the landfill and they need to have a co, to ensure that this happens, they need to have a contract in place with a food. Uh, recovery organization by a certain date to accept that food, um, so. Food recovery organizations, you know, they might be a food bank, uh, there might be similar organizations like that. Um, and this requirement for tier-one organizations goes into effect, you know, on January one, twenty twenty-two. And for tier-two organizations, that would be for two more years, um, tier-one organizations are grocery stores. Um, more or less, tier-two organizations would be, you know, really large restaurants. Um, with, with, you know, large floor area, um, and similar facilities. And then the law also has record-keeping and reporting requirements for generators and the recovery organizations, um. I will note, you know, this is a big undertaking for, um. For edible food generators as well as food, uh, recovery organizations and, you know. There needs to be some organization of this process and I know, um. The city is working along with, you know, other cities and regional partners to try to make this happen as smoothly as possible, you know, you have to identify. Uh, where the food generators are, where the food recovery, uh, places are, there may be an imbalance, you know, you may. Have a food recovery service that is from, um, you know, the town next, so, next door or something like that, so there's an effort to. To look at this holistically, um, next slide, please. Um, and the franchise hauler has an important role in this process as well, of, of course, which in this case is for public services. And the ordinance, um, imposes some requirements on them, uh, among other things, there is a requirement that they, uh. Assist in the education of, um, SB, you know, thirteen eighty-three out to the public. Uh, there is a requirement that they transport source-separated materials to appropriate facility, um. You know, that the, they don't just take the, uh, recycling and take it to the landfill and dump it in the landfill, you know, this is something. That, um, you know, they already do, but this is a, a requirement that's built into the ordinance. And then also another major thing they do is monitor, uh, they're gonna be part of the process for monitoring for contamination, meaning. Are people dumping their recycling into the trash? Um, since they're, you know, that makes sense, they're the ones who are out there collecting it, uh, week in and week out. Um, and the ordinance details, provides a lot more, um, detail on some of the requirements, but we, um. You know, that's sort of a high-level overview for the council, uh, next slide, please. Uh, so the city will, is required to, you know, conduct inspections, um, to ensure. These ordinances are being followed by generators and, uh, edible food recovery places, but, but like I mentioned. Earlier, the first two years is really about education, um, you know, helping people understand. Uh, you know, monitoring, seeing when someone doesn't. Teaching them, uh, you know, explaining the rules to them if, if they need help with that, starting in twenty twenty-four is when, um, the city's required to start enforcement. Um, eh, and doing sort of more formal reviews, um, of that process. People who are, the ordinance sets up a process for, um. Enforcement that mirrors our normal enforcement procedures for when a, um, section of the municipal code is violated, eh, you know. And it could provide for fines if there are repeat, um, violations. Next slide, please. Um, I mentioned procurement, um, the, I know that, that council's been, uh. Made aware of this requirement, but there are requirements for each city, uh, in the state to. Procure a certain amount of, um, recyclable or renewable, um, products, you know, recovered or, excuse me, recovered organic products. Um, and so that's a mix of compost, mulch, um, or electricity divi, derived from, you know. Biomass or renewable gas from those products, um, but it's important to note, this is a narrow or thing, you know. Not all renewable energy counts towards, you know, meaningless gold, it has to be, you know. Based on biomass-delivered electricity, so, you know, solar electricity doesn't count because the, the. Purpose of this organization, that this requirement is to reduce, um, you know, what is in landfills. Um, and so the city will be working to try and meet those goals, that, that, um, those are hefty goals, so there will be, need to be thinking on. Uh, and creative solutions on how to meet that goal, but the first step is the ordinance does require that, um. Paper that's provided to the city or mulch that's provided to the city, you know, when the city goes out and purchases those things. Um, meet certain standards that are set forth in SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, ordinance, uh, excuse me, regulations. Next slide, please, so implementation, uh. You know, to be frank, eh, this is a new, uh, law, and, well, new regulations that have been handed down on the city and they're still. You know, I think a lot of unknowns exactly the details of how it will be implemented, um. The city is working both with Recycle More and, and with Republic Services that implement SB thirteen eighty-three, it will require, you know. Cooperation between tho, all of these entities, um. Each entity may have different skillsets or different, you know, expertise, um, or be best suited to take on certain aspects of this. Um, law, the ordinance allows, you know, the ordinance empowers the city with all of these responsibilities, the city can delegate. Um, all of those authorities to, you know, a private entity, to the, uh, franchise waste hauler, to another public entity. There are a few minor restrictions on that, you know, for example, the city can't delegate its authority to fine. Um, people for violations, but other than that, we have the ability to do a lot of, um. Uh, delegate as, as we see fit, you know, if there's another party that agrees to take that on, so, you know, we are. Working with Recycle More, Recycle More has a, a draft MOU to, to work on some of those issues. Eh, and decide, you know, what makes sense for cities to do, what makes sense for other parties to do. Um, and, you know, based on that and based on SB thirteen eighty-three, it is, um. Possible that there may need to be an amendment to the franchise agreement that the city has with public services to spell those things out or to. Um, to, you know, change existing obligations or to add new existing obligations. Um, that may be something that is necessary in the coming, uh, months. And at this point, the exact cost of implementation is unknown, um. The likely result is, uh, it's likely that some of these costs of implementation will be paid for with an increase. To solid waste collection, um, so by the customer, not all of the, uh. Costs are fees, you know, related to the customers, not all of the fees will be. Uh, not all of the costs will be able to be borne by the customer through higher rates, um, some of them will be borne by the city. Uh, and this is an issue that, you know, jurisdictions throughout California are trying to figure out right now. Um, it is a mandate that's been passed down from the state and the state gets around the law by saying this is an, uh, uh. Unconstitutional, unfunded state mandate because you can fund this by increasing fees, um, you know, the collection fees. Um, so, you know, I think there, it's probably likely that at some point the rates will. Uh, the costs will be recovered through slightly higher rates to pay for all of these additional, um, costs that the state is mandating. So, next slide, please. With that, um, I am happy to take any questions, that was a lot of material. Um, quickly, uh, it was high-level, but I know, um, this is a important issue that the council has, um. Heard about before, but happy to take any questions and, you know, like Eric mentioned, Misha is also available to take. Questions, she's been working closely with, you know, Recycle More and colleagues in other cities.
Thank you, Paul, Assistant City Attorney, I'm, as in the past, I'm gonna turn first to see if there's any public comment and then I'll turn to council for. Further questions.
Yes, Mayor, we do have a public comment, Raphael Menace.
So. For this item, because the definition of haulers. Is broad and encompasses just about everybody in the city, whether it's, they're in si, single-family, multifamily, commercial business, grocery, restaurant, at some point, turn, they'll, they'll fall into the ambit of this act. If they're producing waste like everyone is, but I've got a question about a specific part of the act, on page one hundred and four of the agenda, eight point one zero, point zero eight zero. Requirements for haulers and facility operators. Section A and then four, I believe it is, so that's actually page one hundred thirteen. It says, no person may collect, transport or convey discarded, single-family or commercial garbage recyclable materials. Or organic waste for any fee, net fee or other remuneration whatsoever is charged or accepted. For the collection, transportation, transportation, conveyance, processing or disposal of such material. Including discounted fees without holding a franchise from the city. And so I was wondering, because many people that. Have bought CRV items, like, you know, your juice cans or your water bottles. Then take them to a recycler to basically regain the CRV fee. And it looks to be as though that clause of the ordinance prohibits. Separating out that material under recyclable materials because you would get a remuneration for that. Material, but I don't know, I could be reading it wrong or I could be misunderstanding that clause of the ordinance, but if not, it. And I could also be misunderstanding existing law, but if not, it seems as though the city would be criminalizing. The redemption of, uh, tax that previously people would have been able to offset. Even if they didn't choose to do so and perhaps in a way levying it. Tax, I don't know, it's. Sort of a complicated question. But I think that's my question on this item, thank you.
Mayor, I'm just giving a few seconds to see if any virtual hands pop up.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no more public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period on this, um, item and turn to council and I see Councilmember Tave's hand up, Councilmember Tave?
Well, I was wondering if staff could, could answer, um, Mr. Menace's question a, and. As well as this, you know, I, I'm looking at this, it was kind of along the same, same vein as what we were talking about or what Mr. Menace was talking about. Are there weight thresholds, like, eh, I'm just trying to think of a real-world example, if, if my, my wife says, hey, we're getting new furniture. Anthony, we need to get all of this stuff out of here. Does, do, you know, and I get a U-Haul, eh, can I haul my stuff down to the dump? Or can I pay somebody to haul my stuff down to the dump? Or do I have to put everything in front of my house? Until, until our franchise hauler takes it away? Um, how does that, eh, I guess that's like a more of a practical question, but I think that's something that I know that Mr. Menace kind of meant, you know, was. Circling and, and I just wanna. Just kind of get some information from, from. Uh, Eric and, and Alex, just what, how does that, how does that play out? Um, with, with this ordinance?
Yeah, so, so I would say that portion of the ordinance, this ordinance is not new, i- it's an existing. You know, it's worded a little differently, but it's an existing requirement, you, the franchise hauler has the sole right to collect. Um. Uh, trash recyclable materials within the city, um, so the example that Mr. Menace used of someone bringing. Their materials to, uh, the, you know, uh, uh, recycling redemption center. That is, is fine because they are not, they're doing it themselves, what would be, um, prohibited by the ordinance would be hiring someone to come. Take away your recycling materials, um, and take that there for you, because that is something, that's a service that's provided by. The franchise hauler, you know, you can put it in the cart and have that, um, taken away every, um. You know, every weekly.
Um. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to thank, um, uh, Director Willian, uh. Uh, Misha, Alex and Eric and, and, uh, Councilmember Toms for our municipal code meeting, I, I think we had a lot. Uh, of work behind this, we did get a chance to look at a lot of the red lines and, and kind of dice through it, as, as, uh. City Attorney mentioned, um, really go through everything, so we, we really feel that this ordinance keeps that broad scope. Um, a lot of the, the direction from the state is, is not firm yet, as, as was mentioned in the, in the PowerPoint and as things start to. Uh, form up, we're gonna be able to, you know, walk through modifying this a, along with our partners, um, you know, there's Cal Recycle. Uh, Recycle More, there's, uh, the Cities for Public Services, there was a lot of entities involved. Here and, and it's just with not having clear direction from Cal, Cal Recycle down, eh, you know, we're just trying to keep it as broad as possible. And then, and all these parties kind of coming together and forming one document that works, so, um, just wanna thank everybody, uh. It, it was, I think we were there about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, just trying to sort all this out, so, thanks again.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Murphy, any questions or Mayor Protem Salimi, any questions to staff or comments?
None for me, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Murphy?
None for me, I'm happy to make a motion to approve or to void a proof reading.
Thank you, I have a question, uh, for. Assistant City Attorney or, um, City Attorney, uh, I'm trying to understand this, this challenge of procuring. Sufficient volumes or weights of organic products. Um, it seems to me that, um. The intent is to, to try to have. As much done within the city to identify sources of these organic materials and therefore create that volume or mass, um. But I do, I wonder, uh, well, and if that doesn't happen, uh, what are the consequences to the city? Well, that's one question and underlying that is. What, what, what are the volumes expected for, for a, a city, our signs, or is that part of what we don't know? The, the volume of, 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 um, the number of sources and or the volume that are, that, that existing sources are going to produce and therefore we anticipate that there might not be enough. Enough yield, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so, so the, um, the procurement standard, so the law is intended to. Create, you know, reuse of a lot of stuff that would otherwise go into landfills. create, you know, reuse of a lot of stuff that would otherwise go into landfills. And so I, I think the reasoning behind the procurement mandate is to make sure there's a market for that, um, stuff, so that there is, uh, to, you know, start getting a market going by requiring cities to purchase this material will help. I think CalRecycle hopes and believes will help stimulate and build this, you know, market. So, the law requires, um, roughly eight one hundredths of a ton per resident, um, to be, uh, you know, recovered, to, to procure that amount. So, that means the city would need to procure about, uh, sixteen hundred, you know, more or less sixteen hundred tons of this sort of simplified recycled organic material. So, you know, mulch, for example. Uh, there's no way the city could buy sixteen, use sixteen hundred tons of mulch. I mean, maybe in some freak year for various reasons, you could work. But certainly, the state is not going to have, uh, any first sixteen hundred tons of mulch every year. So, there are other, you know, we have to look to other ways to get that. But, um, you know, for example, one of them might be buying, uh, nat-, you know, natural gas that's for vehicles that is, um, you know, made from this sort of material. A problem that we would run into is that, you know, there just isn't that much volume of that. Every city in the state is going to be looking at these same things. Um, and so, uh, I think as of now, there's still sort of an open question of how every city is going to be able to meet their targets. Um, I don't know if Misha, I know this is an issue Misha has thought about some too. I, I'm not sure if she has anything else to add.
I, I don't. I think you've captured it all pretty well.
So, I imagine targets were based on cities that have, over time, not, not done what they possibly can. Have, have exceeded excessive amounts of landfill, not so much otherwise. Uh, but really, I'm, I'm thinking again here of, of small cities, you know. We're, we're one of those, and other cities our size throughout the state may indeed end up not having the, um, that, that volume, that yield. So, um, I suppose there's got to be some way that, as this gets implemented, um, we're all thinking through what, what it means to, um, to attempt to create something that is not there. Does that make sense? You know, we're trying to produce something out of, out of, we, we have to have a source, and I suppose that's what we're going to find out.
Right. And, and there, I mean, there are ideas of how to make, you know. So, just to use mulch, since it's the easiest example, you know, we couldn't do sixteen hundred tons throughout our city. And, you know, through our parks, that's just not in space. But, you know, we could have mulch giveaways for, you know, community members to, you know, we could secure the mulch and then have community members who want it in their backyards or their, um, you know, their property to come pick that up. You know, none of these, I think, will be solve the problem. But it'll be, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there and a little bit over there. Sort of all together, uh, help the city meet its, um, target, um, you know, or the requirement.
And I'll add that the target is based on a population formula provided by CalRecycle. And as Alex mentioned, um, that calculator allows us to kind of figure out what our mix of renewables will be to reach our target.
Thank you. All right then. May I have, um, Lippy, what's the action before us? So, we've, um, and we are hearing this and being asked to, pardon me, I lost my place on this. Um, I'll entertain a motion to waive the first hearing on this ordinance.
Motion to waive the first hearing.
Second.
Was there anything additional that we needed to do, Assistant City Attorney?
No, and just to clarify, um, the recommended motion is to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance.
So, we, for me, we word that motion, council member Tave?
So, uh, motion to introduce this ordinance and waive the first hearing.
Second.
Thank you all. Okay. Madam City Clerk, roll call ball.
Thank you. Noting for the record that council member Toms is absent. Council member Murphy?
Aye.
Council member Tave?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Salini?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda. And that is, um, takes us back to some old business at item ten A, an update on Measure X and the county fire chief's request for funding for fire and emergency services. And we're going to hear a report by Chief Wainku.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, council, and, uh, members of the staff and members of the public. Um, quick disclaimer, uh, so the, the Measure X, um, the Board of Supervisors concluded their meeting at about, uh, four thirty, so about an hour and a half before, uh, this, uh, this meeting started. So, I don't have a whole, a, a traditional prepared presentation. So, I'm just kind of going off of my notes and, and, and speaking off the cuff of what I heard, uh, while I tuned into the meeting all day. Um, with that said, um, the, uh, getting to the point that concerns the Pinol citizens the most, um, as part of the broader, uh, ask from the, uh, from the fire chiefs or the county fire chiefs, um, for fire service enhancement, um, two million dollars was approved to be allocated uh, towards the, um, uh, the reopening of Station Seventy-four under an integration, uh, agreement with, uh, with Confire. Um, and I would not be telling the truth if, if I said I wasn't very excited about that result and what that could mean to this community. Um, and with that said, um, you know, before we start any ribbon cutting ceremonies for the reopening of Station Seventy-four, uh, this really marks the, the starting point of where the work begins in, in, in working out, um, you know, starting this discussion with, with Confire and, and working out exactly how, um, how that would all flesh out. Um, and, uh, just so you know, that, that meeting, the Board of Supervisors meeting, um, concluded at, uh, four twenty-five. Uh, at four twenty-six, I communicated with Chief Rochard from, um, uh, from Confire. And we're going to put our schedules together. We're going to meet later this week and then put our schedules together as to when we can start putting paper to pencil, um, understanding, or pencil to paper. Um, understanding also that they are in the middle of, uh, uh, another integration effort with East County Fire and that we're coming upon the holiday season. And so, um, so again, this is, um, this integration process is precisely that. It's a process. Um, I'm, I hold a high degree of confidence that we're going to, uh, to, to, to work something out to, um, to reopen Station Seventy-four. Uh, but that's the, it's the beginning of a process and, and, and that's, um, uh, gonna take some time. There's a lot of questions, just like with any, um, situation or financial, um, windfall, if you will. A lot of times that brings up a lot more questions than, than answers. And so, uh, you know, as far as council tonight, um, you know, I'm not trying to evade any questions. It's, a lot of times, it's just, I, I, my questions are the same as yours. You know, I, I, council member Tave brought up a great question to, to Supervisor Joya the last time. What about escalators built into this? You know, that's another thing that was, um, part of the discussion today in the County Board of Supervisors meeting. And, uh, some members of the public asked those questions. And those weren't completely answered. There, you know, there, I think it was one of the supervisors that talked about, um, there was COLAs built into a lot of these projects, uh, ongoing projects at two percent. And was that going to be enough? And, and one of, um, Supervisor Joya's suggestions was that, um, a, a separate meeting take place, um, an additional meeting with the, uh, County Finance Committee, not to revisit allocations, but to precisely answer those kinds of questions and regarding processes and whatnot. And so, um, yeah, so, so a lot of, there's, there's a lot more questions that, that, that need to be answered. They get answered through the process. So, the next thing, like I said, Chief Rochard are going to, and, and myself are going to sit down and, and kind of put together the, the, the framework, the skeleton that we start building off of. And then bring in stakeholders as, as appropriate to answer those, a lot of those questions. Um, but yeah, that, uh, you know, like I said, um, while there's a lot of work to be done, I, 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 I don't mind saying that I'm very excited about the result.
Okay, Chief Wainku. So, as this item is on the agenda, I'm going to turn to, uh, Deputy City Clerk to find out whether there are any public comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have a few public comments. We'll start with Debbie.
Uh, good evening again. Um, I don't think the chief was being quite forthcoming because what I took away from this is they want to, they being Confire, contractually take over the full labor cost of both stations. No different than what some of the proposals have been made in the fire study. So, this, I originally thought Pinol was going to get two million dollars with strings attached, no doubt, to add to their coffers in the reopening Seventy-four. But we would still control our stations. No, they want to control our stations. They will bring in their labor and they will decide how everything is going to go. Uh, I really don't have a problem with it if it were through annexation and if it was regional annexation, like with Rodeo Hercules Fire Department, which fell drastically when they tried to strong-arm them into being annexed through lab code with Confire, I mean, with, um, East County. So, we need to take a look at this. The seven million, the five million currently in the budget and the two million given would not cover all of our current fire costs. Certainly, it would cover their labor and their cost. But we haven't even begun to talk about the cost of running a station, the maintenance, the apparatus. And let's not forget, our unfunded liability for fire will still keep accruing that debt. So, when we didn't approve it through the fire study yet, in fact, that was kind of dropped, all of a sudden, I feel like we're being backdoored, just like they tried with Rodeo Hercules, and it failed big time. What they need to do is come to the people with a complete plan, give us all value. Seventy-three is so valuable to Confire uh, in that it could take one end of San Pablo Avenue all the way to San Pablo and be dispersed through there. Seventy-four then would move up to where seventy-three is. And if, as Chief Wainku semi-promised me, the emergency access at the top of Rancho and Galbraith would be open and we have the emergency access, legal emergency access easement, sixty-nine could make an easy trip to the valley by passing a half a dozen or more lights, a freeway, and a school. So, when we talk about stakeholders, not answering their questions, but having them part of the process is what's important. So, let's decide, should we make this a bigger project through annexation with Rodeo Hercules Fire Department and us? And find out what would work for everyone? As opposed to jumping into a contractual partnership that is not sustainable by any means.
Uh, Mayor, is it time to respond to that now or should I respond to it after all the comments?
Let's, uh, hear the other comments. Sometimes there's comparable. So, let's, let's wait for the other comments and then Debbie will respond. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, Rafael Menes?
So, I've also took part in that county meetings. Started at nine AM, finished, like the chief said, around four thirty. It was a long meeting. Fortunately, I was able to listen in on audio for most of it, though I was able to comment at the end. And some things that I noted about the meeting. First off, there was explicit confirmation at the end that fire was passed as part of the list of things that were passed at the end of the agenda. Because the way that it worked, and I'm sure the council will be familiar with how these things work, is some items got split off to be dealt with later or just to be dealt with through an entirely different funding process. Body cameras got voted on separate from the sheriff's, the requested allocation to the sheriff's department, which got removed except for the body cameras. So, did most of the capital projects to be reviewed further by the advisory committee and the finance subcommittee of the county board. But fire was explicitly flagged as being one of the things that did in fact pass. And it was noted that a three percent rate of increase was built into the ongoing expenditures, generally speaking, and that the County Board of Supervisors would be reviewing expenditures on a year-by-year basis for the ongoing projects to see whether more funding or less need to be allocated to the various areas. So, I figured I'd give my input on what happened in the meeting. From my perspective, we were also able to, you know, deliver the petition that Irma Ruport mentioned at the last planning commission meeting. So, that was nice. Um, I think it's generally pretty clear that the intent of the county is to have an overall integration of Pinol Fire into Confire. Call it annexation or whatever you want, but I don't think it would just be a contract level thing. It seems like basically the funds are attached to, uh, reconsideration of how fire works in the region. It's not just, here, we'll give you two million dollars, you reopen Station Seventy-four. It's, we contribute two million dollars to the overall cost of the new system that we're going to work together on creating. And what that system is, like the chief said, nobody quite knows yet. But I don't think it's just going to be a contract level thing. Thank you.
David or Irma Ruport?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Irma Ruport, and I was also, um, I sat into the meeting, uh, and, and muted, uh, for the Board of Supervisors regarding, uh, Measure X. I too was very impressed. The fire was very important. And in my opinion, I just want to thank Chief Wainku for all the work, Supervisor Joya, the Measure X Community Advisory Board. I also feel that this fire, uh, plan and future is good for the city. Uh, former mayor and city council, Debbie Long, you're so pessimistic, negative. While you were on the council, Station Seventy-four was completely closed. You have no solutions, no options, all these questions. And you know what? We really need to move forward with the plan. Uh, this is our tax money. They're putting it to work. It's closed. The state of California was on fire last year, in the past two years. And you're talking about your, uh, your, um, rideaway or whatever, where you live at, excuse me? Is it all about June now? Let's get, let's get a life, you know? This is about the city of Pinol needing another station. Consolidation, negotiation, whatever it takes. We are taxpayers. We need the Station Seventy-four open in the valley. We took a petition. People are in favor of it. And, and former mayor Debbie Long and council member turned out.
Ms. Rupert, can you please let, have your comments addressed to the council?
I'm referring to what she made a comment.
Can you please refer your comment to the council?
About the fire chief and the fact that the fire stations need to be open. And you know very well that we need them open for the public safety. We are taxpayers. And I feel that people that are negative, you need to get a drift and find out where they were at when the station was closed. We need new ideas. We need to recreate what we can do differently. And if it means teaming up with everybody to make life better for all, why can't we do it? Open Station Seventy-four, move forward. The Board of Supervisors are very, very positive with this. And let's work together. And thank you all. Thank you, chief. And to Supervisor Joya for all that they do. And we are taxpayers that support this. And let's work together to make it work as a win-win for the community and for the taxpayer and for everybody. And not be negative and pessimistic like others. And not be negative and pessimistic like others. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. One last look, please, and then we will proceed.
Okay. There are no more public comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period on this item. And now Chief Weincoop, if you can please respond to the extent that you can, and then I'll turn to council for some questions for you.
Chief Weincoop, may I say something for a moment first? I just wanted to recognize you and the council for its call to action to the residents and the support of our supervisors to have secured this additional funding towards the reopening of 74. If anybody had told me a year ago that we were going to be the recipients of $2 million towards the reopening of 74, I would have been astonished. So I think it's an incredible opportunity for us. I can say that in the time that I've been involved in the conversation about reopening 74 and the potential use of Measure X funds, I don't think it's ever been characterized in any way except that it was going to be through a partnership with Confire of a form yet to be determined. So if somebody thought it was suggested that the county was going to give Panol $2 million and hope that Panol was going to use it to efficiently reopen 74, I don't think staff has ever suggested that that was a possibility. I think at every turn when we've talked about the potential receipt of $2 million toward reopening Step 74, we've always said in the same breath that that would be in some form of collaboration with Confire. We don't frankly know what the arrangement is going to be. So a contract for service is a kind of integration. In Alameda County, it's quite common for the Alameda County Fire Department to provide fire service in cities. So it's certainly premature from my understanding to say whether collaboration with Confire over 74 is going to be a contract for service. As far as I'm concerned, that's, and as far as I know, that's still on the table. As is potentially some form of annexation. The situation with Panol Fire Department and Rodeo Hercules is quite different in terms of the processes that have been followed to discuss this matter. And so, you know, regardless of what happens with the neighboring special district, that shouldn't foreclose any opportunities that are presented to us. And I really want to recognize Chief Weincoop for really proactively advocating first among his peers to build consensus among the fire chiefs for the reopening, because it doesn't just serve Panol. It serves the entire West County region by providing even fire coverage in this area. And also, as I said before, the supervisors and the council for asking resident support. So as chief, I, I don't think anybody can make a credible claim that this would be an unsustainable arrangement. The cost accounting simply has not been conducted at that level of detail. So Chief Weincoop and Chief Richard and I and our finance department have looked at the, the budget, not in, you know, extensive detail, but at a high enough level that we feel quite confident that if $2 million is added from Measure X to what the city is already providing, that will be adequate to open two stations. And so I feel incredibly fortunate that we find ourselves in this situation. And again, very, very appreciative to all the people who have pushed and provided support for this, this move. I think this is a really important day for fire services in the community. Sorry to have taken that time, Chief Weincoop. Please add your thoughts as well.
Thank you for those comments, City Manager Murray. Yes, so I would like to echo those sentiments as, as well as far as appreciation. This was a really, I would say unprecedented collaboration, once again, among the fire department, city management, city council, labor, the fire chiefs and the citizens, all coalescing for one, for one purpose and, and rowing the boat in the same direction. And I think it was really a testament to, to all stakeholders. And I didn't even mention our supervisors as well. So all stakeholders really, like I say, coming together and collaborating on this, on this initiative. And I couldn't be prouder to be a part of it. With regard to comments made, first of all, I appreciate all the comments made by those who, those who called in and all the input that we've gotten from our citizens. With regard to, I think there was a not, not being forthcoming, I believe was the comment. So the words that I personally have used, and I've used them in public forums in city council meetings, in Panol for Fair Government meetings, words are collaboration, integration, consolidation. I have mentioned the differences between annexation and contract for service. All under the aegis of the Confire umbrella is a word that I've used many times before. So from the very beginning, this has been proposed as an integrative process with Confire. So at, at no point was it ever implied that, that these monies would come straight to the city of Panol. And as a matter of fact, I don't, as a matter of fact, in a Panol for Fair Government meeting, I had mentioned, I don't even know how a county tax measure would funnel its way down to a municipality. I don't even know that there's a mechanism to do that, or maybe, I don't know. But, but yeah, my point being, so yeah, that was always conveyed from the very beginning. And, and I'm sorry if there was any misunderstanding on the way that was received, but I, I don't see how, how it can be interpreted in any other, any other way if anybody goes back and reads or looks at my comments that are on tape. And then I guess the old, the other thing that was mentioned was the easement. Yeah, so the easement is still very much a front burner issue. The city attorney and I have been collaborating on that. I know Councilmember Tom has offered her help on that from her contacts at the county real properties level. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that because that was also a question that was asked. So thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you both. Any comments or reactions from council? Questions? Mayor Protem Salimi?
I'd like to thank the staff, the county, the council and the chief for this incredible work that we have done. I think as a council, we have tried for the last 20 years to make that happen. And you just made it happen within six months with the collaboration of everybody. I know that you are still working with the city because you decided to help the community. And I think a lot of people's lives will be saved just by your action, chief. Thank you.
Councilmember Taven?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and but I must say that this, this has been nothing if not a collaborative effort.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer thank yous to, first to the Measure X committee for all the hours that they put in, you know, doing the hard work, the analysis. I want to thank my colleagues, past and present, for, for really, you know, going through the report, doing the homework, going through the process of engaging the community. And, and I mean, this is, this is what leadership looks like, right? I mean, where everybody is able to collaboratively, collaboratively work together with, with a common goal. And I think this, you know, this is great. I want to thank Supervisor Joya. I want to thank Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Burgess, Supervisor Glover and Supervisor Mitchoff for, for also a lot of their hard work, engaging the community and, and really taking a holistic approach to this countywide, which is no small feat. I want to thank Chief Richard for, for staying with us in the conversations along the way. And to our Chief, Chief Weincoop, I want to thank you for all of your work. And I know it's endless meetings, countless meetings, and, and, you know, a lot of analysis. I know we have a lot of work ahead of us. I'm wondering if, and I know this is three hours after, three hours and 10 minutes after the close of that meeting, but at some point, I'd like to see maybe some, you know, large, you know, high-level milestones that we might be looking at as far as timeline, once you get a chance to speak with staff and, and Chief Richard to find out, you know, what those meetings look like, what are some of those checkpoints that we need to, to circle up. But this is exciting news. I think this is great for our city. It's great for the county and our neighboring cities as well. And I, I just see this, this relationship being fruitful from, from now until, you know, we reach for the Confire. You know, that, that's how I feel. From that report, when we had it done, it said Confire was, was the right answer. And, and I still truly believe that. And I think that, that moving forward, it's, it's how we get there. And, and I trust, I have all the trust in the world in staff to get us there. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Taven. And I just wanted to add one thing I think I would be remiss in that mention of all the collaborative stakeholders. I, I think I forgot to mention my, my partner, county executive chiefs as well. So I would thank them as well.
Okay. You both have your, yeah, good, thank you. Mayor Protem Salimi, did you have, well, okay, virtual hands are on. Councilmember Murphy, any comment, question, reaction?
Nope. Thank you so much for all your work, Chief Weincoop, and thank you to the public. I know there's so many people we can thank, so I feel like everybody said thank you. I want to reiterate City Manager Murray's comments. Thank you. We call it drop the mic. I feel like you dropped the mic and said what needs to be said. And I'm just so thankful for everybody in, in the public. And, you know, two people who come to mind, three people who come to mind. I want to thank the Measure X committee. There was only one member of that committee from Panol. His name is Ali Saidi. He's a public defender. That was a Panol resident who served, who was of service to that committee. And I want to thank him if he's watching, if he's not watching, if people who know him are watching, please send his, our thank yous to him. I want to thank Rafael Menes, who many of us hear every week, or every week we're here. Thank you for your continued activism as a public resident, but thank you for pushing a change.org petition and getting more and more people to sign that. That was really exciting to see. Even in Glasgow, I saw that and was just really excited to see. And of course, I always want to just think, you know, Ms. Rupert, I know many of us know Ms. Irma Rupert. She pushes fire under all of us as a council. And it's hard to hear sometimes, especially as a new council member, but I just, again, thank all the public residents for your active involvement to get us to make this possible. So yes, city staff, city council, thank you so much. We do this thanklessly. But thank you to the members of the public who don't have to show up, but continue to show up. And I just, it's very moving to just be here and be a part of this. So Chief Weincoop, shout out to you. I look forward to your collaborative leadership in the future. And if there's anything we can do to keep pushing, as you said, this is just the beginning, let us know, let us know. We are here and we are happy to support your leadership and certainly happy to get Station 74 back open. So thanks again.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy.
So you've heard lots of notes of appreciation, Chief Weincoop, and also notes of appreciation extended to all involved within our city as well as outside. So I'm thinking even the term integration agreement is at this point somewhat nebulous. What I understand is what has been presented to us here in council, you know, the study that we commissioned a couple of years ago, that we heard some of, I think last year, I am forgetting the timeline. And then I think concurrently or subsequently, all the work underlying Measure X. We're fortunate as a city indeed that, that Measure X existed and the council, that the supervisors went about the route of considering the West Contra Costa fire stations as possible. Area of, of allocation of some of these funds. Because I know that there were many, many competing needs that were also part of the decision by the, by the advisory group as well as the supervisors to identify where the bond funds would be allocated to. I'm thinking of this as, as you, as the beginning to understand perhaps differently what it means to work with the county and the kind of relationship that can be had with the county. We rely a lot on that level of government and on their staff because we are a small town. And so I appreciate that you have took the initiative to integrate yourself with, with all the folks there, longer peers there, to have a sense of, of how the discussions go about and ultimately how the decisions about allocating public money happens. And so without a seat at the table, we might have gone a different, or they might have gone a different direction. And we might have not had the benefit of hearing the news of this allocation, along with all the advocacy that has happened around town and by community members. What comes to mind is indeed the, what underlines ongoing efforts and sustainability. So I know that you know, and City Manager as well, the importance of having along with the discussions for every aspect or suggestion that is made, the structure that, that this integration takes, that there be time as well for the review, the development, the re-review of the financial components to all of those different suggestions. The county, in a way, is privileged in that they have a greater number of staff to take a look at those details. But that doesn't mean that our staff and our finance director don't also have in mind what is going to work well for the budget that we have here in the city and where we might need to, to continue, where we might need to, to direct our own funding to make residents feel and, and know that they're going to be safer. And especially recognizing that, that the conditions, the environmental conditions that have contributed to the risk of fire have augmented since, since 74 closed. So the other aspect of this, and I'm so glad that it was part of the letter that we submitted to the advisory committee as well as the supervisors, is the ongoing need, because we do not have an emergency hospital nearby, of having the medical necessities or needs of people here in Panol and in the area attended to by your firefighter paramedics. And so we can't ignore that aspect as well. And I think, and we somehow talk about opening Station 74 because of the risk of fire, but there's also increasingly, and we've known, we've seen this nationally, the need for, for well-equipped, well-equipped and well-trained crews to be available to attend to the medical emergencies. And we know that's the greater number of types of calls that you all receive. So thank you in advance for the work that you're going to do. What I'd like to request is that, as one of the council members asked as well, is that we have a sense, as you can see in your work, that we have as council and public where we also have to reach and make side steps again. Because I know that there's going to be some of that. There has to be. If this is a new direction, a new approach, we may go one, one step forward and one step back, one step sideways, until, until something works out for both the county and, and city of Panol. So along with that again is the, the presentation of how things pencil out, the costs associated with whatever model is discussed. So thank you in advance for that and we look forward to hearing that.
I all means, and thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Murray, city staff and citizens. Thank you.
We weren't kidding in that all-day meeting. Yeah, it's going to take much more than that.
Madam Mayor, can we, can we send a letter, a thank you letter? I was just wondering if the council can agree on sending a thank you letter to the county? And that's what, as the chiefs as well, everybody who participated in that effort.
Sure, we can. Thank yous are greatly, greatly welcomed, I'm certain. So if we can add that, City Manager Murray, preparation of a thank you letter for getting to this point. In our attempt at enhancing fire services in our city. Thank you. Thanks for your suggestion, Mayor. Thanks for your suggestion, May. Okay, let's move on to next item on the agenda. Now, we have three matters of new business. And first one is abandoned vehicle abatement fee, reauthorization and election. The action before us is to adopt a resolution per staff recommendations. And we will hear from Chief Cannon, or is it Officer Rogers?
Yeah, it'll be me.
Okay, we are open to hearing you.
Great. Thank you. Sorry. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, staff and members of the community. This item before you is a recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution to reauthorize the abandoned vehicle abatement program and the associated fee subject to board approval. This program came about in 1991, and Contra Costa County has been a part of it ever since then. In the state, there's approximately, there's no less than seven other counties that participate in a program similar to this. It's designed to take state money and reimburse cities for abatement of public nuisances and blight from the street and also private property. The fee or the money comes from a $1 fee collected from each vehicle and additional $2 fee collected for certain commercial vehicles during, I believe it's during registration of the vehicles, of your vehicles, excuse me. This fee has to be reauthorized by participating counties every 10 years. And today, if this resolution is adopted, we are basically going to be saying that we support it and we would like to see it on the ballot. The board for the county AVA, which I was a part of for three years prior to 2019, is going to be, sorry, I have to look at my notes. I wish I could go off the top of my head. But it's going to be contacting the the county elections office and directing them to place the measure on the ballot for June 7, 2022. And on the ballot, it'll be to reauthorize and extend the AVA fee schedule and also the program. If it's extended, it goes until 2032. We have benefited from this program, at least as far as I've seen in running the program for the city, by taking in fees that we were putting out by having staff out on the street, abating the abandoned vehicles, spending time writing certified letters to property owners and also vehicle owners, notifying them their vehicles were being considered as abandoned. And also the time it takes to tow the vehicles and get them off the street. So I really don't have much more than that. If you have any questions, I'm open to. I could probably answer any of them, so.
Thank you, Officer Rogers. And let's turn to the public to see if they have any questions for you, and then we'll turn to council. Deputy City Clerk, any questions for this, from the public?
No, Mayor, there are no virtual hands. I was just giving it a few seconds to see if any popped up. And no, no, there are no public comments.
Okay, then. I will close a public comment period on this item and turn to council. Any questions, Officer Rogers? See, you were quite clear then. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Come visit us again. I think you have been visiting us again, been behind the scenes there.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm always lurking.
All right. Thank you so much. So there is an action that the council has taken, that is to adopt the resolution per staff's recommendations. So may I have a motion to adopt the resolution presented by staff?
I make a motion to adopt the reservation presented by staff.
Thank you. And may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Mayor Protem, and seconded by
I'll second.
Councilmember Tave. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Yes, thank you. Noting for the record that Councilmember Toms is absent. Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Ruben?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda. And that is a presentation on ZEV 2030. And I understand we have a presenter, perhaps? Council, City Manager Murray?
Yes, Ms. Chikar is going to introduce this item and our outside presenter.
Thank you.
I do want to note that I believe we maybe are addressing the agenda items out of order.
I think we, right, this was reversed, and I'm not certain why. Well, I'm seeing a slide about ZEV 2030. But our next agenda item is proposed amendment to the fiscal year. Oh, there, okay. So we're back in order now. Okay. 11B, proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021-22, operating and capital budget approving additional appropriations. And the action before us is to adopt the resolution per staff recommendation. And we've got Director Guillory to present. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff and members of the community. I do have a presentation to frame this item. Dave, am I able to share my screen?
Thank you.
Is everyone able to see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, as the mayor mentioned, the item is for the city council to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 21-22 budget to incorporate self-staff recommended additional appropriations as well as potential councilmember recommended additional appropriations. So the fiscal year 21-22 budget was adopted on June 29-21. And at that time, we projected the usage of unassigned fund balance in the general fund and Measure S funds for a total of $4.5 million, with $2.4 billion coming from the general fund and a total of $2.1 million coming from the Measure S unassigned fund balances. At that time, we also started the process of the city council members recommending additional appropriations to advance a number of initiatives in the fiscal year 21-22 budget. That process was started on June 29. However, it did not, it was, it ended before, or it concluded without all of the council members being given a chance to put forward their additional appropriations or their recommendations. So with this item tonight, not only do we have a number of staff recommended additional appropriations, this is also an opportunity for other council members to put forth any additional appropriations that they would like the council to consider. So also, just to note, typically, the budget is adjusted at the mid-year point. And that's usually the sixth, after the sixth month in the fiscal year. Mid-year review is usually in February. And we take a look at the budget overall, looking at revenue and expenditures and determining if any adjustments need to be made at that time. However, sometimes it's necessary to modify the budget at other periods within a fiscal year, including before and or after mid-year to address some time-sensitive needs and also council-directed initiatives to meet some of our operational needs. So this item is coming before you before mid-year. But these are a number of time-sensitive items that staff is putting forward. So as I mentioned, just to give a reminder on some of those appropriations that were already included in the adopted budget, staff-directed, or council-directed staff to include appropriations totaling $750,000 to be funded by the general fund unassigned fund balance and $330,000 in appropriations to be funded by the Measure S 2014 unassigned fund balance. So these were the items that are currently included in the adopted budget. So just wanted to provide some background information on those items that are already reflected in the budget. So moving forward, staff identified a number of items that it's recommending to be added to the budget. For the general fund, we're recommending about $1.1 million of unassigned fund balance in the general fund. The majority of that is to go to the general reserve. During the year-end analysis of revenue and expenditures, staff recognized that the transfer from the general fund to the general reserve had not occurred. And moving forward, we will make sure that this step is not only built out in the reserve policy, but also making sure that we program it in the budget and that it's transparent for everyone to see that it is included in the budget. So a little change in the operations for that. With this transfer, that will bring the general fund or the general reserve balance to $8.4 million, which equates to about 50% of the ongoing total general fund expenditures. And that complies with the city's reserve policy. Also included in this list of appropriations is the greenhouse gas inventory and the climate action plan. And both of those initiatives were directed by the city council to be added to the budget at mid-year. But since we're making the adjustments at this point in time, we did add those to this list for consideration. There's also a small allocation for the reclass of a management analyst, which is the current vacant position, to the assistant to the city manager in the city manager's office. And that's just the difference in the salary and benefits costs for six months of the fiscal year. And that will be programmed going forward in the next year's budget, if approved. For the Measure S 2006, we're recommending $31,000 for vehicle purchase. This is to replace a public safety vehicle in the police department. And for Measure S 2014, we are proposing $716,000. And this is for a number of equipment and vehicle purchases in the public works department, and those are detailed in the staff report. So just a little bit more information or to expand on why we're requesting these purchases now. During the budget season, when we were developing the operating and capital improvement, one of the goals was to approve both of those or bring those before council for approval at the same time. Also, the city is working to enhance its management of equipment and vehicle purchases using a software, as well as changing some of our standard operating procedures to better manage our equipment and vehicle purchases and centralize that function in the public works department. Another point to mention is that, as you may all be aware, there are a number of disruptions in the supply chains for equipment and all sorts of other things. And so to get a place in line, so to speak, it's important to earmark these funds for deposits and things like that. Even though we may not receive some of the equipment or the vehicles in the current fiscal year, they may be out a few years in terms of delivery. But this is to at least set our place in line for this much-needed equipment to replace outdated equipment and vehicles. So just to give an overview of the fiscal impact, in the general fund with the original budget, we expected to end with about $3.5 million. With the recommended adjustments, we're projecting to end at about $2.2 million. And that is the number that is circled in blue in the last column. And for the fiscal impact of to the general fund and the Measure S funds combined, we expected to end with $8.3 million in unassigned fund balance. And with the recommended adjustments, we're projecting to end at $6.3 million. And again, it's important to note that this funding source is separate from the $8.4 million that will be in the general fund, or I'm sorry, general reserve fund. So our next steps is to add any councilmember recommended additional appropriations that may be approved tonight by the city council. And then from their staff will amend the fiscal year 21-21, 21-22 operating and capital budget. And then following that will go into mid-year. We're expecting to have that around February 2022. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments.
Thank you, Director Guillory. Let's turn to public to see if there are any comments, and then we'll come back to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do have a couple of public comments. We'll start with Rafael Menez.
Thank you. So I guess it looks like most of the spending for this is divided into two categories. A lot of it is a transfer to the reserve that should have been done automatically. It's part of the budget, but wasn't integrated into the process yet, but will be in the future. And the other part is purchasing new road repair equipment for public works in advance. Because it's going to take a while to get through the supply chain with our major being a replacement of a police car and some climate action and work. My questions aren't as much about the presentation as they are about potential additional appropriations by the council in addition to these proposed appropriations. Because I know that the last time we went through this whole process, it was sort of one councilmember comes up with a list, there's a vote on that list, but it moves on to the next councilmember. And that process seemed inefficient to me. And I was wondering if there had been any improvements made in the process to allow for a more considered approach, perhaps? To have the input of all the councilmembers considered and to make sure that we're not just spending money because it's available, as it were. I know that Councilmember Toms had several of the same concerns. The last time council discretionary funding was addressed, but she's not here tonight, so I figured I should bring them up as well. Thank you.
David or Irma Rupert?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question. On this report regarding the reorganization, I think it's been discussed before, and this is to the city manager or anybody could answer the question. I'm pretty concerned about not going out for grant funding. Funding sources are available through the local, state, federal, or cities, especially right now with the pandemic, the COVID and all this. Is it possible that maybe we could bring someone with some experience with that kind of economic or grant writer as requirement or experience? I know our cities lacked that a lot, and we don't have, we haven't had that opportunity to bring more grants and funding sources to the city. Now I see that there's a lot of things available. Some of us have gotten the grant funding, training. Maybe a committee helping the city, if you can hire somebody, how about an economic development group to bring funding back to the city? And I can go over and over, but council, I would appreciate the fact that you just think about it, and to the city manager, maybe consider that in the future? Thank you very much.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Okay, so I believe there, I'm not certain whether there were questions, not just comments. But if staff took notes and identified any questions, if you would please respond.
I'm happy to take a crack at the second comment. So actually, the strategic plan that the city council adopted in February 2020. did, as one of the 22 strategies or special projects, direct the staff to come up with a grants evaluation program. That's something that I believe is a year-to-deliverable. That's this current fiscal year. The finance director, Ms. Guillory, is going to be leading that effort. I just, for the record, I actually think the city has been quite successful in pursuing grants. So I do think that there's, so again, I've worked in this field and particularly in public finance quite a bit of depth and in a number of jurisdictions. I do think that there's a general perception, but I would say is a misperception that there's scads and scads of grant money being left on the table. I frankly don't think that that's accurate. I do think certainly there's much more grant funding available now because of the extensive federal relief related to COVID. But we're, the city's staff is really well tied in to most grant funding sources. Cities take different approaches to staffing the grant writing function. Some cities, particularly large ones, might have a centralized office for coordinating and preparing grants. In smaller cities, it's often a decentralized process, which it is here. So each department is, in my opinion, well tied into the grant opportunities relevant to their service area and does a good job of making smart decisions about where there's a likely good return on investment in preparing a grant application. So Director Guillory will be sharing more information with the council when we do an evaluation of our grant process. But I actually think the city does quite well through our distributed system right now. I don't think it would pay for itself to have it be a full-time function. So that's my take on that. Regarding Mr. Menes's comments, agree entirely that, you know, it's challenging to have an incremental and sequential discussion about various budget alternatives. We are not tonight using a different process than has been used historically. The process we use is common in most jurisdictions. And, you know, an alternative approach is to have a special format or meetings talk about budget priorities. I do think we'll have an extended budget development process in the upcoming year to provide more opportunities earlier in the process for all council members to share their ideas. But other than that, we're recommending using the normal process to let any council, remaining council members, share ideas for individual additional appropriations tonight, which is them recommending it and seeking the support of their council members for those appropriations. But I think the point is well taken, that we're always looking for new ways to improve the budgeting process, which frankly is a very challenging one. Director Guillory, would you like to add anything to those remarks?
No, I don't need anything added. Thank you.
Thank you both. I think that big, big added piece that happened this year was new to us all was to have that CIP presented that they had put them to. So that in and of itself was a process that required staff's time so that we would hear what had been summarized about that and what was going to be presented and incorporated into the budget process. So that was, that was, you know, along with our lessons learned. It's doable to have a CIP presented before the end of a fiscal year and to anticipate any programming and associated budgeting for the year that's coming in. So I think that's, that's quite an achievement. The amount of time that we all take to deliberate could be, could be, could be more. I think it could always be more. And I think we've had, we've had to balance the discussions that we have here along with the length of time that our meetings are. Even that, there are different, different degrees of appreciation about for shorter meetings or longer meetings depending on what the item, on the agenda item is. So just keep going, and we do better next time around, and I'm looking forward to that. So there is an opportunity here. I would ask if we can have one slide, because part of the discussion now is to have council members make some recommendations for additional appropriations. But may we please have the slide that shows what the council had already appropriated for 2122? And that'll be before us, and then we can, we can see that as a basis for what is already in the works, City Law. Yes. And if we can have that as a, just that single, that single slide, if we can. Director Guillory, something, I don't know, you do something or if David now has to do something to just help, allow us to see that single slide, the larger one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I see it on my screen. I wasn't aware you can't see it. I'll try to share again in just a moment. Can you see it now?
There, that's it. Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that's before us. That's something that the council adopted all of these different, well, two, two large sources of funding, general fund and Measure S, and then underneath each of those, the different kinds of programming. So that's what we've got adopted for this year. So I'll open it up. Councilmember Tave?
All right, yeah, I just had a question about the report, and it was more towards the vehicles. I could see that we're, we're going to be purchasing some heavy equipment. I'm wondering, do we have salvage values on the cars that, that go out? And does that offset our costs? Are we looking at the plus of, like, let's say if we have like an old truck, it's still worth $4,000. Does it, do we have a net balance? I know that's kind of getting into the weeds, but I, I just think it's important for us to make sure that we're, you know, getting salvage values off our cars, that we have a policy if it's three years or four years and, and we turn the car over or the vehicle or whatnot. Do we, do we have that calculated into these asks? Or is this all new equipment?
Yeah, this is all new equipment.
Okay, so we're not replacing any, any old equipment?
As far as I know, no. I think this is all new equipment.
Okay.
If I may, Councilmember Tave, so yeah, we do, the council, the city council has established a surplus property disposal process, so we do undergo that. The city council needs to act to approve our surplusing disposal of surplus equipment. So periodically, city staff brings items to the city council. Back in August, I believe, the city council approved a pretty extensive list of surplus old police vehicles that we were going to dispose of. Those, so we, we do, they're not all for salvage. They might be for other purposes as well. But yes, we do sell those for the greatest value we can achieve for them. And that funding is, you know, does in a sense offset the purchase of these new pieces of equipment. So for instance, one of the vehicles that is being requested this evening, I believe, is a Ford Escape. That was a police, that's to replace, the only replacement piece of equipment I'm aware of is that was to replace a police vehicle that had been involved in an accident and need to be, needed to be salvaged. A lot of these, yeah, and I would invite, because most of these are public works, I would also invite.
Well, that was my, that was my next question was, can, for the public, can you kind of give, what, what, what does this equipment, what kind of range does that give us? Or what kind of new tasks, activities that Public Works can do? You know, just so that the public can understand that we're purchasing a dump truck to be used for various tasks.
Yeah. Mr. Binghamman, if you're available, can you talk a little bit about these new pieces of Public Works equipment?
Since we're on that topic, can we change a slide to advance the slide to show that? So there's not a mismatch between, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, City Manager Murray. I can comment on, on the equipment. So the equipment Public Works is asking for are actually replacement of existing equipment that has exceeded its serviceability. The bucket trucks are replacement equipment for our current bucket truck, which is a 1998 Ford bucket truck. It failed its safety and dielectric tests back in April, but it also was going to phase out with the new carb regulations at the beginning of July. So we did not choose to invest the money into it. This is a very frequently used piece of equipment. This is how we do tree trimming, street light repair, installation of the holiday lights, numerous types of activities for the Public Works Department. There are two bucket trucks listed. I was presenting council with two options. The first option is a regular bucket truck, which is a traditional vehicle that is solely powered by the diesel engine. And that's the one truck that's listed for 148,000. The other option is the hybrid bucket truck, which has a traditional diesel engine on the chassis, but the bucket is operated fully, is fully electrically operated and would be a move towards net zero and sustainability for equipment. The truck is operated without the diesel engine needing to be run, which gives the Public Works crew several advantages. One, it's quieter, it's electric, it can be plugged into a regular outlet, so we don't need, wouldn't need a special charging station. However, the price for that vehicle is $50,000 more. The challenge we're having with bucket trucks right now is the standard bucket truck, if I were to place an order today, it's a possibility we wouldn't see it for at least 18 months. And the hybrid bucket truck, they're telling me, is probably scheduled for delivery in around two and a half years, and this is all because of the supply chain. The dump truck, council already approved because both of our dump trucks, again, are out of carb emissions compliance and as of July 1st, and we're not supposed to be using those, which they are parked right now. And we're using other equipment to try to satisfy the Public Works maintenance needs without using those trucks. Kenworth might be able to get us a truck in six to eight months, but again, they're having supply chain issues. The mower would be a replacement of our current mower, which is over 20 years old. Our current mower is currently in the shop for the fourth time this season. And it is basically reached its service life. The only new piece of equipment are the coal planes. What those are, those are asphalt grinders that would use our current skid steer track loader. There are attachments for that track loader, and that would help in road maintenance, because we could grind out potholes and bad areas of the asphalt and then be able to repatch those at depth, making substantial permanent patches. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of that equipment.
So, so thank you for that. So I had a question about, do we need two bucket trucks? Or were you looking to get the hybrid and maybe just earmarking 149,000 for future purchase?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry. The way this is presented, it's showing two bucket trucks that we are going to be allocating. And I'm trying to figure out, do we need to stagger these two? And then my other question to city managers, if we've already approved a dump truck, are we approving another dump truck or are we reapproving what we approved in the past?
Joe, are you gonna take that or you want me to? So regarding?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, thank you, Councilmember Tave. No, we're not purchasing two bucket trucks.
Okay.
I submitted the presentation and actually asking direction from council whether they would like Public Works to purchase the standard regular truck or to move forward with the hybrid truck. So it would only be the purchase of one, one truck. We only need one truck. We're only going to replace the one truck we currently have. These were just the two, the, the, the two available options and the different costs for the two options. And as far as the dump truck goes, because of the supply chain issues, Kenworth had, had basically shut down production and told us that the PO that we already issued them, they weren't going to be able to fulfill the, the delivery of that vehicle. And there is a cost difference now to reorder the vehicle. So we're not, we're not ordering another truck, but there, there's about a $20,000 cost increase over the truck the council already approved.
I see. Okay. I guess, so do we get, we have to pick whether the 193 or the 149? Or is that something that, okay. All right, well, I guess I would lean more towards the hybrid truck, even though it's a longer lead time, just so that we can start doing that with the vehicles. I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, but the other question I had was, you know, as we're, as we're looking at this 6.28 million, and, and I guess just for the public, when we do the Measure S, I like this chart that shows like what's coming out of the general fund, what's coming out of 2006 Measure S and what's coming out in 2014. I'm just wondering, when we combine all those, that's the 6.28 that's shown in the report? Is, is there a, I guess, how it's reported, is there a percentage breakdown of what, what's currently left? Or I know that's up a little bit more in the, in the chart here. I'm just wondering if there's a percentage breakdown of what, what's general fund, what's Measure S, you know, the balances? You know, in, in a future report, like if we could show, maybe it's already in here, but I couldn't. It, it, you know, whenever we mention those three, it'd be nice to just see, okay, once we have a total. Because I think it's important for us to track all three, even though it is locked into general fund. Just, just a comment on that. And then in regards to, if I can, Ms. Mayor, just the process of adding, I know that I wasn't able to get a lot of the items that I wanted back in 1216, 2020. And then when we had our discussion on June 15, 2021, that was the capital asks. That process was brutal, and it took us to about 1:30 in the morning. And at that time, we asked, can we come back and have a special meeting? Can we go over the list? Can we send the list to the city manager? There was a lot of ideas that were thrown out there that weren't really flushed out. And rather than go through this process minus one council member, Councilmember Toms, I think we should take, take some, take a step back and try to think about this process. Like we had that, that tool balancing app that was, I thought was great. I don't know if that could be incorporated into this process when we do the capital planning. But I think to ask council members right now to come up with their list of stuff and for us to try to, because I, I, to be honest, I have my notes here, we can do that. But I mean, I, I think that everyone else probably has their notes too. And this process would be another back and forth. I, I, I think this can be done better. And, and I think this forum, although it is our process, and to the city manager's point, these are those checkpoints for us to add stuff. I think we need to be a little bit more intentional, a little bit more deliberate as to how we go about this. I'm open to ideas on how, how everybody wants to do it. I, I, I just think that rattling off a bunch of stuff, stuff that might already been done too, I mean, that's another part of it as well. It's just not going to be productive for this council. And in light of Councilmember Toms not being here. I'd hate to go through and approve a bunch of items and not have her perspective as well. So those are my comments, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you. Just a few questions. I wanted to ask about Request Three, which is the undergoing of reorganization. It involves reconfiguring departments. One question I have is just regarding, actually, it's two questions. The reorganization, City Manager Marie, can you explain the difference in what a management analyst does versus the assistant to the city manager? And can you understand, can you explain the reclassification of like why that salary would be increased there?
Yeah, sure. So the assistant to the city manager is, you know, an unusual and very specific. I mean, it's unusual that you don't see it in all sorts of organizations. It's very specific classification to cities. It's basically a program manager in the city manager's office to oversee special initiatives. So it's kind of comparable in most cities to something like a principal management analyst. But it's an at-will position, so it's different in that regard. That means it's someone who serves at the, you know, at the will of their supervisor. It means they can be discharged for, you know, various reasons. So what assistant city, so when we had management partners come in and do our organizational assessments, they made a number of recommendations. One of the recommendations was to have a classification or someone in a position like assistant to the city manager to oversee some citywide initiatives like legislative advocacy and intergovernmental affairs. We don't really have anybody doing that right now. To oversee citywide communication engagement, to oversee our IT function. So some of these are, some of these are brand new functions that we really haven't staffed at all in the recent past. Others are functions that have been historically overseen by other staff who are relinquishing those activities as a result of the reorganization. So it's really just, they're kind of in a series, management analyst, senior management analyst, principal management analyst. It's just that the assistant to the city manager is a specific kind of classification. They might deal with other confidential matters like related to labor negotiations and property. So it's really just, and again, I think the organizational assessment correctly identified that you need somebody with a pretty significant amount of experience and a pretty robust skill set to do things like oversee intergovernmental affairs or at least be the main point of contact and manager of that, to oversee our IT function because that's outsourced. And that's a higher, you know, set of responsibilities and more complex set of responsibilities and experience than a management analyst classification has. That's the rationale for that.
Thank you. And then the second part of that request speaks on the reconfiguration of what we originally planned, I believe, in our initial negotiations as the community services director. And now that is being, I don't know if we would consider it dissolved or if it's being postponed as a continuation of the assistant city manager role. Can you explain that? And then also, can you also explain why that would not require a budget adjustment? Or I guess it is required a budget adjustment, but it's not reflected in the Table Three, on page three of the staff report?
Okay. Yeah, so as you know, we're undergoing a reorganization that has a bunch of different components. And that involves portfolios being split up and reshuffled and the creation of some new departments. So the main we're creating, we have created separate Public Works and Community Development Departments, both with separate department heads. Whereas in the past, we had a single development services director that oversaw both. We also have created a community services department that is an amalgamation of, it's primarily parks and recreation, but also includes a number of other related community oriented services like PCTV, our food security, some of our health initiatives like tobacco education and the like. So we are moving forward with that reorganization. And in some cases, existing staff are being retasked with new portfolios. That would have been the case with our former development services director. Coincidentally, she was retiring at that time, so that wasn't necessary in that case. But our assistant city manager has been tasked with overseeing the community services department. It turns out, because of the city's historic practice of having individual employment agreements with department heads and other division heads, we have a contractual arrangement between the city and the assistant city manager. That means that we can't at this time change their title and classification. So we can change their, the tasks that they're assigned. And we're always going through that process. Our assistant city manager is playing the role of the community services director. But we need to maintain that, the current title of that classification due to the existing employment agreement between the city and that employee. So that's something that wasn't clear. And frankly, I wasn't aware of when we were just, nor was management partners aware of when we were discussing this reorganization because it's kind of a intricate detail of an employment agreement. So while that employment agreement is in place, we need to maintain that classification and reflect it in the budget. If we don't, some of our stakeholders, including organizations like hers, you know, require that we have, for any filled position, we have that position reflected in the budget. And so we kind of need to go back and make this fix after the fact because of what we learned about the employment arrangement.
So is that going to, is, I know there's an understanding here as well that there is a search for an economic development officer?
So that, what we are going to do with the funding that has been, that the council appropriated for economic development support is yet to be determined. Our new community development director, Ms. Whaling, is responsible for economic development. We didn't previously have someone who was responsible for that. So 25% of her time is going to be spent on economic development. Regarding the additional ongoing appropriation that council provided, our approach is that we want to see what the economic development strategy consultants recommend as the best use of those funds. So there is not a position in the budget other than the time that the community development director is going to spend and I'm going to spend on economic development. Depending on what the consultants recommend as a sustainable economic development function, they might recommend additional staffing, we're not sure yet.
Great, thank you. And just as a follow-up to that last question, what I'm hearing is that we have under wraps an economic development plan and strategy being developed. In that strategy, we are trying to figure out, or we will get an answer around whether or not we need or should have an economic development officer. The right name, that's in the budget. And then to that previous question, we no longer will have a community services director as our original budget alluded to. We are now continuing on with an assistant city manager.
They'll functionally be serving as the community development director. They need to retain their title for the term of their employment agreement. After the employment agreement expires, we'll have a different conversation. But the expectation was, as part of the reorganization, we would not continue to have an assistant city manager classification. We'd have instead a community services director classification. So that's still the long-term plan.
Okay. And that expiration date is next year or?
The expiration date of that employment agreement, I believe, is in early 2023.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. I have a few questions for Mr. Bingham. So this stems from something that Councilmember Tav asked. So back to that bucket truck. You, Mr. Bingham, you asked us, you're asking for a direction from council about which truck to order. Give us again the dates when you could expect delivery on those, on both of them?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The standard bucket truck, we have an anticipated delivery date of 18 months to two years. And for the hybrid bucket truck, there's an anticipated delivery date of about two and a half years. So we're looking 2022, let's see, 2023 for the standard truck and 2024 for the hybrid truck.
Okay, thank you. So in the meantime, what work is not being done around the city in the absence of, with, or, yeah, you don't have a working, functional bucket truck, is that correct?
We don't, but we have been renting bucket trucks. Right at this moment, it's been very difficult to rent a bucket truck because of the supply chain, because pretty much all other agencies are in the same position we are. So everybody is trying to rent the equipment. But when we are able to rent the equipment, we're able to do the functions for the activities that need the bucket truck support. So we're not, we're not accomplishing the activities needed by the bucket truck. It's just we have to schedule and postpone around being able to acquire the truck when we can.
Yes, and in the interim, we have, we have, what, growing trees or limbs that are not being cut? Or, you know, what are some of the risks that residents are being exposed to because of the kind of work that you could be doing if you had a bucket truck sooner than later?
Well, it's the, as you pointed out, the tree trimming, the streetlight maintenance, you know, repairing streetlights that are out.
So just for the record, if I may, we're not creating any additional risk to the residents. We're still conducting all of the routine maintenance on an appropriate schedule. It does mean, as Mr. Bingham expressed, that we need to bundle some of the work that requires a bucket truck. So we don't have one on hand. And that means we have to be more deliberate in our planning to lay out and do the necessary preparatory work so that when we have access to a bucket truck, we can take care of that work. But for example, as an appropriate opportunity to provide a public thanks to our colleagues at Hercules, we will be borrowing Hercules's bucket truck to install the tree lighting in the upper canopy of our downtown streetlights, as well as to do some of the decorating, I think, of our holiday tree that is going to be installed in Community Corner. We have also requested the use of other local peer agencies' bucket trucks, including the county. So that's the situation. Mr. Bingham has done a masterful job of piecing together access to bucket trucks, both through rental agencies and our peers. But it's not an ideal, sustainable operation. But to be clear, we're not creating any additional risk to the community. We are able to take care of all the necessary maintenance issues in a timely fashion.
Thank you for clarifying that. Because I was wondering if it, how much of a difference, six months difference, maybe a year's difference in having something that belongs to the city and is more readily available, if that really matters or not, or to wait. I'm not thinking, you know, of the features of the trucks necessarily. Although it seems advantageous and beneficial to have the hybrid truck, there's a longer wait period till we receive one. And I'm just trying to get a sense of whether it makes sense to wait longer or not. And it seems like we can wait. It just means that staff needs to continue doing their masterful job at piecing and counting on their neighbors to have access to a bucket truck. Is that right?
I'll leave it to Joe on to the, yeah, I mean, how pressing is six months difference?
In what we do, it's not a critical timeline. If we're able to have access to the equipment either through rental or cooperative arrangements with other agencies, we would still be able to accomplish all of our tasks and provide, you know, provide safety to the residents while we waited for the piece of equipment.
Okay, thank you for that. And now I'm going to turn to city manager. What's $120,000 going to get us, other than a document? I'm sorry, but I'm putting it as overly simplifying that. But that's a hefty amount of money for a plan on the surface.
Well, it's a pretty rigorous analysis. And frankly, I think it's a necessary precondition to doing all sorts of important climate efforts. So, you know, absent a climate action plan, I think we're kind of flying a little bit by the seat of our pants in terms of deciding what interventions to engage in to reduce our carbon footprint. So that's the going market rate. We did some, you know, cost comparison. And I think that's absolutely, you know, a critical document. It's one that we committed to performing as when the city council adopted the sustainability element some time ago. So I feel like in this era, that's a document that a city like Pinole frankly can't do without. It does go, you know, it is going to provide guidance that's going to be relevant for a number of years. If you think about it on an amortized basis, it's, you know, there's a little bit of sticker shock, but I think it's a very valuable document that's going to provide us with useful guidance for a number of years.
I appreciate that description and elaboration on what that will provide us. We do not want the report to just sit on the shelf and it sounds like it's going to be giving us the kinds of notions that are going to be, that we can then take action on.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, but thank you, thank you for that. Okay, Councilmember Tav, you've got your virtual hands up?
Yeah, you mentioned something about a cooperative agreement. Do we have anything documented between our neighbors and other surrounding cities? Mayor just brought up a kind of good point and, you know, that conversation was great. But do we have anything formally said, to refresh my memory? I think we talked about it, and I remember Tamra bringing it up in her presentation a couple of years ago, that there's somewhat of an agreement. I'm just not sure if it's a handshake agreement or if it's something that's documented.
So before I ask Joe to respond to that question more generally, I think Councilmember Tav, what you might be recollecting is that we, the council authorized a cooperative agreement between wastewater agencies for emergency mutual support.
Well, no, this was a couple of years ago, prior to...
Predating my arrival.
Predating, it was a presentation and we talked about it because asphalt was, and roadwork was the subject. And the equipment associated with it. God, I want to say it was maybe late 18, early 19, when she gave her presentation on the roads. And I'm just wondering if we have that type of arrangement with our neighbors? And given the circumstances of supply chain, they're saying that this may last for a couple of years. Has there been any discussion amongst city managers, amongst Public Works staff about how we can kind of help each other? You know, if we had to borrow equipment, what that would look like? Especially if the rental companies are inundated by private industry.
So, Joe, if you would, I'm not familiar, aware of whether or not we have any cooperative agreements with peer agencies for equipment sharing.
As far as I am aware, we don't have any formal agreements. In the past, it's just been a reciprocal situation where if a neighboring agency needs our help, we, you know, step up and help them. And if we need help, they help us. But to my knowledge, we don't have a formal agreement in that sense.
And there hasn't been any discussion among the city managers? I don't know how common a concern this is. As you know, the council authorized the city's purchase of some new equipment, which we received particularly related to street work. So I think this issue of the bucket truck recently frankly has really brought this matter to the fore of a specialized piece of equipment that we don't have access to right now and won't for some time. That might be a little unusual. We might be, you know, well-supplied regarding other equipment.
Well, maybe if we ask, you know, Mr. Bingham, is that something that's a normal or common occurrence amongst agencies?
Not in my experience. It's an infrequent, more when this type of situation comes up. If somebody's bucket truck or tractor truck or dump truck breaks down... and they can't get it, you know, in a reasonable time, and they can't get a rental, then we do what we've done in this situation is reach out to neighboring agencies to see if they have, you know, the ability to help us.
So it's more professional courtesy than their formalizing?
Yes, correct.
Got it, okay. I don't know, maybe there's an appetite for some of our neighbors to have that discussion a little bit more formally. It's just during that conversation, I thought, oh, man, this is not going well if the supply chain gets worse. And then the back and forth with the mayor started to think, well, maybe it's just something we should try to, maybe even if it's just exchanging inventories or having an understanding of what everyone has. But I thought it was a good conversation.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. At this time, really, as City Manager Murray stated, it's really this only, it's only this piece of equipment. As far as the rest of our equipment, we have what we need to do our daily activities, and I don't foresee really having to borrow anything else from another agency. It's just this particular piece of equipment that has very high demand right now. For instance, one of the issues is that PG&E has scooped up a lot of the rental fleets because of, you know, the recent fires and things like that. And they're not relinquishing that equipment back to the rental yard. So the rental yards don't have that inventory for other clients. So this is a very specific, isolated issue with the bucket truck.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. So I want to respond to something that you said, Councilmember Tave. I'm not sure how satisfactory it would be again if we do talk about additional budget appropriations. I appreciate you recognizing one council member who's not with us and who probably would want to also be part of a conversation about that. So we don't have to go on to discussing that. I'm frankly surprised that that is yet again. Maybe it's a reflection that we happen to found the better way to go about discussing why we determined a certain amount of funding ought to be appropriated for XYZ. And that I would appreciate having more understanding about. I'd like to understand the basis for why anyone brings up requests for funds. I'd like to understand how that meshes with the plans that we have and strategic plan and any activities that have been discussed up until that point, let alone any new ones that surfaced because of the conversations that we have. So all that means to me, that I often want to understand the rationale behind why we do what we do. The decisions that we make and how we go about doing so require that kind of discussion. And especially when we're talking about funding, you know, funds that are public, that we ought to be thoughtful about, you know, why we suggest certain appropriations. So I would support the notion of going, you know, not having this kind of discussion about additional appropriations today for one additional reason. We're only a quarter's worth of reports from the city as to where the budget is. And if we are going to hear more at mid-year, it's also the beginning of additional time to do something different with the budget process that usually begins in April. So I'm thinking about February, around the time when we could surface this matter again about any additional appropriations. Or maybe not even title it that, but let's think about allotting some time to a discussion about where we are with the items that were appropriated and the programming related to that. So I think that's one slide before this one. Director Guillory, if you can show us that one? So, yeah, I'd like to see where we are, even, you know, again, trying to get a sense of, you know, we appropriate certain things and then what actually can happen in a given year? You know, where are we at? Where are we with that, along with how does our budget look at mid-year? So that's what I would propose, that we discuss appropriations later. And Councilmember Finn?
Yeah, I, first of all, I want to say I completely agree with you. I think that would be really helpful, particularly around, I think some of these categories are just like large priorities of our council, right? And I see some of them kind of overlapping, but I also see the uniqueness of certain appropriations we develop, but you know, I'm thinking a lot about our revitalization reserve, our business development and community health reserve, our economic development support, you know, potentially even, you know, our municipal broadband planning under kind of this world of economic development and our approaches as council members to see that broad issue in different facets. So I think there would be value to figure this out. I would also say, you know, this was my first budget negotiation cycle as a council member, and I found it absolutely valuable to have the discussions and always find it valuable, Director Guillory and City Manager Murray, I find it always valuable to like review these things. So I appreciate you all bringing, you know, the product of budget negotiation into the process of ongoing council meetings. Because I think, you know, we say these things in budget negotiations, these long meetings, we stop the meeting, we go back to the meeting, and then the budget is done. That's not really true, right? The budget is constant. So I just, I think it would be valuable to figure out some way of, I mean, we are doing that, but to continue to find ways of negotiations and approaches that may be valuable for our council, but also for the public. And because I did experience this budget negotiation in, you know, following what was a financial plan for the first time, I think we did as a council, it'd be interesting to see how that financial plan aligns with this. I did take a look at it before our council meeting today, and it seemed like most of the things that we funded aligned with it, but I just didn't know like how or what role that financial plan, seeing that this is the first time our, you know, our council has done it. I think it's the first time our city has done something like that. I wasn't sure what role that played here and if we should, you know, link it to a certain page. I don't know, I don't really have an idea, but I, you know, whatever it is, I just saw it as an opportunity for us to kind of think about our budget process and our participatory budgeting a little bit more. So I did want to just ask real quick about the revitalization reserve. I know that we talked about that, in my head, that was more so of a downtown revitalization. Did that change, or are we still calling it a revitalization fund for all of Pinole? Or I just wanted to, just a quick question on that piece.
So I think now that Director Rayland is here and chairing responsibility for economic development, we can go back and look at the record. I remember taking, having a very specific name, but I would have to look at the record to remind myself what the specific focus was intended to be. I don't know, yeah, I don't recall offhand whether it was for downtown particularly or not. So we'd have to look into that.
For sure. And I guess I just want to reiterate my question again. What role does the financial plan that we created for the first time this year play into this type of conversation, discussion, action?
Yeah, so it's, so it was a, as our first long-term financial plan, it wasn't as detailed in terms of laying out as, laying out what the financial investments should be. So there's, a financial plan has two components. One is a very detailed forecast, and another is a plan that says, you know, this is our existing condition, given that and, you know, whatever changes we might want to make to expenditures and revenues, this is what we want to do next. These are the new services and programs. So that part was left a little vague just because we hadn't gone through a lot of dialogue about that. But the idea is, in general, you do this long-term financial plan that gives you the big picture, you know, what is our condition and what's our financial capacity for five years? And then based on that, what does the council want to do? You know, do we want to expand services in environmental areas? Do we want to, you know, increase our public work staff? Does the council think there's a need for a new revenue measure? We didn't get into that level of detail that really a full-blown plan should articulate. And then when you have a full-blown plan for that, and we're going to revisit it, I think in the spring and come up with a new one, then the idea is the budget process is supposed to be really straightforward because all, most of what you're doing is saying, do our ongoing operations comply, conform to the long-term financial plan? And do any new things we're doing in the budget conform to the long-term financial plan? So the more descriptive the long-term financial plan is and the more deliberation goes into creating that, the more streamlined the budget process should be because it's really just saying, okay, we have this five-year plan, is this one-year budget consistent with that? Is our next year's budget consistent? So that's supposed to be the arrangement, and that's how the sequence and timing is supposed to go also. You do the long-term financial plan update. Some folks do it every year, some cities do it every year, some do it every couple of years. You do that early before the budget process, and then the budget process is supposed to go speedily along. That's the idea.
Thank you, and thank you for that clarity. I found that the financial planning was helpful for me, especially, like I said, it was my first introduction to the budget negotiation before we actually talked about appropriations. So I look forward to that conversation, hopefully early winter, as I just would love for us to explore if we are doing or supporting anything that goes on the ballot to voters. I would want ample time to support our council potential decision to do whatever that ballot measure would look like. And I feel like spring is getting pretty, would be getting pretty close to election season, even though it doesn't sound like it, time happens fast. It's almost been a year, so.
Agreed, agreed.
Thanks for the clarity.
Thank you. Councilmember Tave, you've got another thought there?
Yeah, I do. I, you know, I was looking at that, I remember, you know, when we went through this process and it was, you know, I can't say it enough, it was brutal, right? As late as it was. But what I want to say is, is, you know, I look at this and I think, as we, you know, just my time on council, as we go through this, you know, certain things happen, like 4.6 million comes into play, and, you know, then the infrastructure bill just happened, and I'm looking at three things on here that are directly related to that. And when you look at economic development support, it was directly related to that. And I think like this is a constant living document that needs to be, you know, watered, fed, nurtured, you know what I mean? And I feel like, you know, this list only represents maybe 5%, 10% of all the things that I think that we can, you know, just walking the city can combine. You know, and you create this long, long realist of stuff that we'd like to see, right? And then it becomes a task of prioritizing that, then it becomes sizing that up to the long-term financial plan. At least that's my, the way, I guess we could look at it from the top down, right? And that it would work out and everything would get slotted in. But I kind of see it the other way because, you know, we're constantly getting feedback about the parks, about the roads, and all of this data is coming in. And I'm just wondering, how do we slot that in to the larger project that rolls up to the larger plan? And I don't know if I'm looking at it backwards and not the other way, but I just feel like, like this requires a lot more attention, a lot more time and a lot more involvement with council. And I'm trying to figure out how do we do that as a council? And I thought that the other process, that four-point, the ARPA funds, it was two weekends, but it was a good process. I felt like I got a lot of info out of that and those data points. We could have used more engagement, I mean, as, you know, we could all, you know, from the public, but I think we got some good data points, some good, you know, suggestions. So I don't know, I just, I'm thinking about how everybody feels about a larger process with this. Or maybe I'm going way too far into the weeds, but I mean, I'm not sure how everybody else feels about it. But I guess my point is, is that this thing has changed. The conditions have changed, the funding has changed. Some of this $200,000 for recycled water, right? For that plan, some of that money could be ARPA funds, and does that free up $200,000 to do something else, right? And so this thing has changed, and I just wonder if it's worth it going through the process again? Can we improve that process? I just have a lot of questions and suggestions, so.
Well, I hear more questions, and I'm not quite sure if I'm hearing your suggestions just yet, but I think from the, what I gather from all of our comments is that we are not going to have additional appropriations, recommendations by council members tonight.
Not tonight, I think, yeah.
So that leaves us with the other, that's the recommended, the recommendations by staff. We do have an action before us that we need to consider, and that's to adopt the resolution that includes the recommendation of additional funding appropriated for the various items that have been talked about already. So are we ready to consider a motion to adopt the resolution that includes the recommendations from staff?
Can we, so I can motion to approve the recommendations suggesting item six instead of seven, which is the purchase of the hybrid bucket truck? I'm not sure if that changes the balance on that chart, if the director could.
Yes, it changes the balance, it'll decrease.
Decrease a bit, okay. Yeah, so I would motion to approve with that modification.
Okay, do I hear a second? I'll second the motion. Oh, okay, yes. Okay, and I'll second the motion, and Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Noting for the record that Councilmember Tombs is absent, Councilmember Murphy.
I'm so sorry, I think I see a public comment, I didn't want to pass the vote without the.
Oh, thank you for that, let's check in with Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, there is one public comment that popped up after, Mayor, after you closed public comments. Do you want to take that comment?
No, I want the vote to continue, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Um, hi.
Councilmember Tave?
Yes?
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so motion passes, we adopted the recommendations from staff. Thank you very much, and we're going to move on to the next agenda item, I believe.
Prior to that, if I may, Mayor, may I offer that Director Guillory and I would be happy to come to the council with a recommendation for both an update on the status of these appropriations and also a recommendation in advance of the mid-year budget adjustment discussion about what our process should be for the upcoming budget cycle. I mean, I do have to say, we are in unusual circumstances, and so our budget opportunities are frankly really, really extensive and, you know, sometimes feel a little overwhelming just because we're investing in so many different things, catching up on a lot of deferred things, new funding sources. So, you know, I do applaud the council for making it through last year's budget cycle because it really is a very unusual time with many more options than would normally be the case. So I think once we get into the rhythm of the budget process, it will feel, it won't feel quite so, frankly, a little bit overwhelming. So yes, Director Guillory and I will come with a proposal for a process for next year's budget that I think will provide more opportunities for engagement and a better, you know, more satisfying decision-making and prioritization process for the council. So just wanted to offer that.
Thank you, I welcome that offer, and Councilmember Murphy, you've got your virtual hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to ask a quick question. Did we continue the balancing act tool beyond last Saturday's meeting? I know that we still haven't funded everything, I just wanted to make sure for the public's sake.
Yes, we did, and responses increased by 75% after the workshop.
Wow, incredible, thank you so much, Director Guillory.
You're welcome.
So we should go back to those two, if we can, have a process to review those again, since that's a big deal.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So yes to your offer, Councilmember, I'm sorry, yes to your offer, City Manager Murray, thank you for thinking about that. So moving on to item 11C, support 100% zero-emission new vehicle sales in California by 2030. We're going to hear about that. The action before us is to consider approval of a resolution per staff recommendation, and we'll have Ms. Carr leading us off on that.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the public and city staff. Earlier this year, council requested a few. Earlier this year, council requested a future agenda item to receive a presentation from ZEV 2030. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing Peter Myers representing ZEV 2030, a California-based nonprofit coalition made up of climate leaders who are committed to implementing a zero-emission vehicle standard in California by 2030. Mr. Myers will be leading us into the presentation on the ZEV 2030 campaign. And thank you, Mayor. At the conclusion of the presentation, staff recommends council consider adopting a resolution. The resolution recognizes that transportation sector is the largest contributor of greenhouse gas emissions in California, contributing to 40% of those emissions and that investments of time and resources are needed at all levels of government to facilitate that zero-emission vehicle transition. And adopting that resolution expresses council's support for the goal of reaching the transition by 2030. And with that, I'll be introducing Peter Myers.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff, especially Ms. Carr. And thank you, Councilmember Murphy, for, for initially having this conversation and, and bringing this to the council. Don't know if, if I'm showing up on the screen or not, but. The, let's see if I can see my slides, there we go. So, again, as Ms. Carr said, my name is Peter Myers and with the organization ZEV 2030. We're not just California-based, we're East Bay-based, started in Oakland and I'm actually a Terra Hills resident who drops his kids off at St. Mary's every day. So, so very invested in Pinole as a community as well. We started ZEV 2030 several years ago when the idea of, of a 2030 goal for 100% zero emissions vehicles was very pie in the sky. And in the last year, with the governor stating a 2035 goal, with the technology becoming more and more practical, with the range of cars becoming more and more, further and further distance, the technology is there, the industry leaders are there, the political willpower is finally there and it's time to have statewide action for a 2030 goal of zero-emission vehicle sales. On the next slide, you know, this is the, this is the original impetus for, for zero-emission vehicles. We are at code red at this point as the IPCC has said. If we do not have a sharp decline in greenhouse gas emissions by the end of this decade, global warming will surpass 1.5 degrees Celsius and, you know, parts of, all of the, all of the work that's been done on the Pinole shoreline will, will lose about five to 10 feet off of it. So this is really code red. And of course, at this point, the benefits of, of, of zero-emission vehicles, it's not just to the environment, it's also for California jobs, for California industry. Talk more about that in a moment. On the next slide, as Ms. Carr said, you know, 40% of, of greenhouse gas emissions in California are from transportation. Likely in Pinole, because MCE is able to decarbonize so many other parts of, of the city economy, transportation is probably a much larger portion of those greenhouse gas emissions. And I'm glad that the council just approved a greenhouse gas inventory study. The, on the next slide, and I'll try to be quick, I know that other items have taken some time today. So why start in California? First, it was the first state to establish a ZEV mandate. That was Governor Newsom's actions last year. It's the fifth-largest economy in the world, including the home to 17 electric vehicle manufacturers as well as some of the largest charging station companies like ChargePoint featured in this, in this graph. And California is an environmental leader when it comes to cars and they have been since the Nixon administration. So California is able to set the standards for tailpipe emissions and it can set the standards for, for, for electric vehicles and hydrogen-powered vehicles and, and other technologies that are zero emissions. The other part of this is that jobs are a major aspect of this in California. The, the number-one export in California's industry is electric vehicles. So, on the next slide, if somebody can show the next slide. So, ZEV 2030, our focus is on coalition building. We're bringing environmental groups, business groups, city and local governments, all together to demand this change in California, to have a statewide goal of 100% new vehicle sales by 2030 being zero-emission vehicles. Part of that is also education, public awareness, some of the advocacy work to make sure that people understand how practical electric vehicles and, and other zero-emission vehicles are quickly becoming. And on the next slide, you'll see some of the company that, that City of Pinole would have an opportunity to, to join this evening. Includes City of Richmond, which was actually the first city to, to pass a ZEV 2030 resolution. But includes Oakland, Los Angeles, Hayward, Culver City, Marin County. MCE has already voted on that. Thank you, Councilmember Murray, Murphy, for, for your presence on that board and your vote. And so, leading East Bay cities as well as City of Los Angeles and other Southern California cities are joining this and we would love to have the, the City of Pinole on board. Also nonprofits included, environmental groups like the Climate Center have joined. The California Democratic Party is in support of this, for those of you on the council who, who are Democrats, as well as the Contra Costa County Democratic Party or Democratic, yeah, Central Committee. Let's see, so with that, the next slide. I just wanted to say thank you and be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, let's turn to the public to see if there are any public comments and then I'll turn to council for any questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, we do have a public comment, Raffi Omenes.
Thank you for presenting on this. I think it's a great idea for the City of Pinole to back transitioning, the state of California as a whole transitioning over to zero-emissions vehicles being the only vehicles sold by 2030, at least for light vehicles. I was curious if you knew what the timeline would be like for medium and heavy vehicles like the hybrid bucket truck that we were discussing just a few minutes ago? And, well, that's my question on this, seems like a great idea, we should do it, thanks.
I can answer that question now or later, whatever the, whatever you prefer, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, let's see if there are any other public comments, sometimes we've got some comment questions, so.
Currently, right now, I'm just, like I said, just scanning, just a few seconds more. Mayor, there are no more public comments.
All right, I'll close the public comment period on this matter and, Mr. Myers, please, if you would respond to that public comment.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I don't know that we're specifically advocating for a particular date for medium and heavy duty. I know that the governor has, has stated some goals and they're, they're later than light-duty vehicles. One of the biggest opportunities, I think, is, is on public transit. Buses in particular have a great opportunity to use hydrogen because, you know, hydrogen fueling doesn't make sense in every situation, but for a large bus operator, it often does, where they can have a hydrogen depot and that might even work better for them than, than a bunch of electric charging stations. But, you know, that's probably a fantastic opportunity. There are other advocacy groups focused on school buses and public transit being electric even before 2030 and there are some vendors doing that. There are some of the equipment that Public Works would require is becoming more and more available. They're still relatively specialized, but then again, isn't just about every machine that Public Works uses, pretty specialized. The other opportunity that, that the city would have is, is in the electrification of, of vehicle fleets especially. And, you know, I see the vehicle fleet every day and I know that the city has worked a lot with getting to hybrid vehicles and there is an opportunity now with next rounds of purchases to do electric vehicles for large portions. It's still difficult to find electric vehicles that will be good as police pursuit vehicles, but parking vehicles, other sort of non-pursuit patrol vehicles are, are becoming more and more available as electric cars.
Thank you for your response. Now I'm going to turn to council members to see if there are any questions or comments for you. And thank you for your presentation, I'm not sure that I thanked you for that. Okay, so virtual hand, Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, you know, we're, we're part of MCE and, and, you know, we have a, a good portion of, so really what we're focusing on is transportation. How, how is, I guess everything's got to start with this report, right? Of how much greenhouse gas are we actually giving, is Pinole generating, right? And then we come up with ways to slice, to slice off greenhouse gas, right? I mean, that's generally how cities would, would approach this?
Yeah, I mean, the, in a sense, this is a little bit detached from, from individual cities' accountability, right? These are, this resolution put before you is specifically asking, it's basically registering a desire to the state to set this goal. So it's, it's not as if, let's say, for example, the City of Berkeley want, when they voted on this, or the City of Richmond, it was not specifically targeting, you know, the BMW dealership off of Ashby or the, you know, or the Hilltop dealerships. It is, it's talking to state government and saying, this is where the change needs to be made because individual cities can't make this kind of blanket, you know, you, the City of Pinole can't go and say, starting 2031, nobody can register a new internal combustion engine vehicle. It's just not practical at the city level. But, so advocating for that at the state level makes a lot more sense.
No, yeah, I hear you. I, I'm just thinking to myself like, you know, we're taking these steps and, you know, we've been talking about putting charging stations in, in the city to try to encourage people to, to purchase electric cars and, and doing these other kind of passive ways of getting this, getting this done. I think it's a good resolution, I, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I just, I'm trying to, you know, everyone says climate action and I'm trying to figure out, okay, when do we get to the action part? Right? Like, I mean, we, we, we talk about it, we put resolutions, we've been talking about it for years in this town. And, and I'm trying to figure out, when, when does the action part come around? But, no, I think it's a great resolution and I'm definitely in favor, thank you Peter, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, anyone else? Are we ready to, to consider a motion? Oh, Councilmember Murphy, just saw your hand going up.
I'm happy to make a motion, I just wanted to thank Mr. Myers for your presentation. Also wanted to thank Ms. Carr, we are so lucky to have you for driving these issues, thank you so much for always being. I, I am certainly with Councilmember Tave on action, climate action. Mr. Myers, I, I do have one question, I mean, you've mentioned kind of this push of cities to, you know, pass this resolution. You listed several logos. I was wondering if you all have already started going to some of the transportation boards? I mean, MCE does a lot of work around really energy efficiency and housing more so than, I mean, they do work, we do work in transportation as well. But, you know, Westcat, you know, our mayor serves on and as well as Councilmember Tombs who's not here tonight. You know, AC Transit also is a jurisdiction that goes into Pinole. MTCI knows a huge jurisdiction around the Bay Area, ABAG, some, some of these, you know, other entities that are not necessarily cities but still have a huge jurisdiction over transportation or transportation policy. Have you all started to go that route in terms of having them pass these type of resolutions?
We haven't yet, it's a good question. AC Transit, knowing some of the board members, I think that's already a focus for them. I think that they are moving toward that. With Westcat, now with, you know, I've started speaking with the City of Hercules as well. I think as more communities that are Westcat, that, that, you know, are, are members of Westcat start to vote on these, I think it will be, become a, a simpler policy to implement for them as well. Thank you for that, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm going to put my huge millennial hat on here and say, and ask a question about, you know, ride-sharing companies, right? Like the private sector, right? Who, who, you know, obviously has a huge input in terms of greenhouse gas outside of, you know, the new companies, we've seen Big Oil. But I'm thinking about the Lifts, the Ubers, the, you know, T U R O Toros, right, of the world and their role in, in, you know, transferring people in and out of Pinole and, you know, they do that with gas vehicles. So like, what does that look like or what, what could, I guess what could, once this passes, if this does pass tonight, what could citywide policy look like in terms of kind of going the next route? As Councilmember Tate mentioned around action, I think that's kind of my, you know, my challenge to myself is I, I believe resolutions have a huge impact, right? In terms of symbolism, in terms of understanding the issue more broadly for the public. And also I will acknowledge that it's, you know, our, everyone's responsibility, right? Especially city governments, local governments to push the, push the dial when it comes to private, you know, the private sector as well and challenging them to do better. So are there any strategies that you can tell us today to, you know, take us to the next level, we, you know?
Yeah, I think, so, and, and two parts to that, sort of two separate answers. One is Lyft and Uber, I believe, I know that Lyft has and I believe Uber has said something similar, that they would like their entire fleet to be electric vehicles by 2030 as well. Now, there are equity issues there, right? And, and there, there are lots of equity issues that need to be addressed when we talk about the ZEV transition, right? How does, how does a move to electric vehicles work for everybody when not every, you know, it's, it's easy for me in my home because I have a charger outside the garage and I can plug in in the evening and it's done. But that becomes a lot harder for apartment dwellers and so on. So equity is a major issue and that is why public charging is so important. I would also, in terms of things that, that the City of Pinole can specifically do, one is to stop the distribution of fossil fuels. And the idea of licensing new gas stations is an outdated concept, right? The, the idea of putting in a new gas station at the Safeway complex on Terra Hills, that's, that's an obsolete thing that, that, that makes very little sense for new gas stations to be going in in 2022 when you have cities like Petaluma saying, we've had enough of gas stations and we have enough and we can ban the further construction of them. So, bringing in more public charging stations. There are also programs under the banner of CAL EVIP, which is, which is subsidies to install public charging stations for businesses and I believe governments as well. MCE is a good source of knowledge on that. So those are, those are some of the, the practical things.
That's super helpful and I, I really, really appreciate your work on this and thank you for coming to present to us, to teach us a little bit more because I certainly need it. And I think that it'd be great to also work with colleagues who, like I've mentioned, some of their transportation boards and see how they feel about it. One thing that sticks out to me is I, I, this may be very small, but I think about the Westcat Center that we have in Pinole and how many buses come into Pinole and, you know, I don't know if that will be a part of our greenhouse gas inventory, but it certainly is a part of our air. And it makes me think about, hmm, I wonder what the impact to, you know, that, that area, you know, Pinole shores area is in terms of how much more carbon. in terms of how much more carbon we get, how much more, you know, people in that area who live there receive in terms of air pollution. So I think it would be great to just continue on and please, thank you again for your work, and please let us know if we can, you know, learn a little bit more about zero emission policy. We would value that, and certainly I would.
So, Mr. Myers, thank you for bringing up the matter of considering equity and what that, how that translates to the daily user, or writer, or visitor, or neighbor, or resident of Panol. And in their daily lives, what it means to their household budget to anticipate or plan for acquiring a vehicle that would reduce greenhouse emissions. So, correct me here if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that given the governor's actions, that 2030 is the year by which, by when we are to have, when electric vehicle, the opposite of electric vehicles will cease to exist on the lots, if you will. And so, is that correct?
No, I'll just correct part of that. The governor's declaration is 2035. And the issue with the governor's executive order being targeted for 2035 is he won't be in office then. We need actual legislative solutions. And something, something that truly comes from the entire state government, saying that 2030 is a goal. You know, taking off the ZEV 2030 hat for a moment, even full state legislative action that said 2035 would be an improvement. But 2030 is the true goal, because you need time after that for ICE vehicles to phase out. Because somebody will buy it in 2029 and they'll have it for 15 years. But yeah, so, you know, the governor thankfully was not recalled, but he will be out of office well before 2030 and well before 2035. So we need statewide action, not just one person.
Thank you. So they're helping understand the advocacy and the education. With regard to the Westcat Board and what's, we haven't had, you know, a presentation by someone like you there, but I know that some of the buses are slated to go electric around 2030. Now, the big statewide and even federal requisite for that to happen, and for any transit agency to really fully convert, is again, funding for public transit to begin with. And so today, what we had in mind as a local transit agency is trying to, trying to gain ridership. We're down to by 70% in some cases. That's what's on the discussion table at this point. Along with the management of a transit agency that's as small as Westcat, that's part of a Bay area-wide plan by a number of different groups interested in creating a seamless approach to public transit. Modeled somewhat on European kinds of approaches that would have a rider from across two counties coming into the city, any city, in a more direct, more practical, more affordable way than what we have now. So those are the kinds of discussions that are going on as well, inter-COVID. And right now, the priority is, how do we get riders back on to even access public transit, let alone have our fleet converted to something that would be, that would also help in the long term? That's, that's part of the reality of what we face, right? There's one interest in planning for better health and better air quality, et cetera, into the future, along with the necessity to also recognize that, you know, again, something that is not string to public service is recognize the ongoing necessity to identify public funding as well. So keeping both in mind as we go along and discussing this is going to be important.
Yeah, and if I could editorialize one more second, I would say that the, that exactly, transit needs to be better, you know, single, personal vehicles, even electrified, is not the answer to all climate situations. It's certainly not the answer to all transportation safety issues. You know, there needs to be dedicated bike lanes on San Pablo Avenue. There needs to be, you know, there needs to be safe spots across the street. Those things are all still critically important, as well as just electrifying vehicles.
One step at a time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I'm sorry, do we have a motion floor already for one? To adopt the resolution as recommended by staff. May I hear a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve, yes, to approve the resolution recommended by staff. Resolution supporting the goal of reaching 100% zero emission new vehicle sales in California by 2030.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Councilmember Tave. Okay. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Noting for the record that Councilmember Tombs is absent. Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers. And we're going to move on to the next portion of our agenda. And I just lost my place, so pardon me. I'm going to try to get back to that and, or see the slide on the screen. Reports and communications, mayor report. Since we last met, which was during the special meeting about the ARPA funding, there was one meeting, and that was the Westcat Board. So at the Westcat Board, among the things that the board decided was to extend the program, okay, the Clipper, introducing the Clipper car to to help offset the cost of public transit. The board adopted a resolution confirming, or, pardon me, let me go back. To extend the Clipper Start Income-Based Transit Fair Discount Pilot Program through June 30th, 2023. So that's how far out we're thinking is going to be necessary to bring some of the ridership back. So that was one of the items that was discussed and approved, as well as the board adopted a resolution confirming the continued existence of a local emergency, just as we did tonight. Okay, and another matter that is in the news everywhere and also locally, that board, we directed staff to establish COVID-19 vaccination policy to apply to both the agency and contracted agency's employees and contracted employees. And that vaccination policy will allow for exemptions based on religious beliefs and/or medical conditions, and also allowing for employees to test, to determine whether they're infected or not with COVID. So those were some of the activities of the board on that particular meeting. And I will now turn to, well, if you would allow me, one more thing. Ongoing is my request to all residents in Panol to continue doing your share, your part in minimizing your own exposure to COVID, as it still is out there, and to also help the community to continue maintaining the community's immunity to COVID-19 as possible, also consider vaccination. And the usual practices that we have been introduced to, continuing to have, and also to practice the social distancing as necessary, and also masking. Now, there were comments earlier about our event, our outdoor event, and how everyone was masked and the distance was not as maintained. And yes, partly because it was an outdoor event, does make a difference between being outdoors or being indoors. Probably have more of those discussions as we continue. So thank you very much, everyone. Stay safe. And I will turn to next item, mayor and council appointments. We do not have any city council committee reports and communications. I'll begin with Mayor Protem Salimi.
I don't have anything to report, but just wanted to thank you for that wonderful year that you serve as a mayor.
Thank you. I've got one more, one more meeting, and then I'll pass it on to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Murphy?
Yes, just wanted to let folks know that this, let the public know that this Thursday, we'll be having an MCE Clean Energy Board meeting. It will begin at 7:00 PM. It is available online, the information to the agenda, and also all of the attached links are available on MCECleanEnergy.org. I want to also really put a alert out, as well as a call for public engagement, specifically for this board meeting, but also, you know, post and after, because MCE has sent a notice to propose rate adjustments. So MCE, which is the primary electric generation service provider for our city and also Contra Costa County, is considering rate adjustments effective January 1st, 2022. This is largely due to increasing energy costs. And of course, during times where the energy cost was lower, MCE has been able to keep their rates low. But in 2022, things are a little different. So MCE's proposed rate adjustments would result in the average MCE customer's generation cost, which does include, of course, the PG&E, PCIA charge, which we talked a little bit about earlier this year. By, it would increase by a minimum of three cents per kilowatt hour, which is essentially like 1% of your total bill. The good thing is, is that if you have opted into MCE, the targeting, MCE is targeting a 2% savings for generation costs compared to PG&E. So your bill will be cheaper if you still choose cleaner, if you do choose MCE. But of course, proposed rate adjustments, especially during now, can be hard on some families. So just want to encourage folks to attend Thursday night's meeting. Please provide public comment. Please email me directly if you have anything that you want me to say. And all of this is available on MCECleanEnergy.org, or MCECleanEnergy.org/rates. And you can learn more about the board meeting on Thursday, as well as all the conversations we're having. So I would really, I would really encourage any Panol residents watching this, council members yourselves, city staff, let us know. Let me make sure I can advocate for you on the board and speak up for Panolians. So I would appreciate that. In addition, just want to also invite folks, it's been a busy month for me, so I'm really excited to just be back in Panol. And want to invite folks to my coffee conversation on Sunday. It's going to be at 9:00 AM. I know it's early, but I love coffee in the morning, and I even love talking to Panolians more on Sunday mornings. So this Sunday at 9:00 AM, I will be having coffee and conversation. You can sign up on my website, MurphyForPanol.com. It's via Zoom. So we'd love for the public to come out and let's have some conversations. So thanks again. I know there's a lot going on, so appreciate everybody, council and staff. Thank you for this meeting and looking forward to the holidays together.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to invite everybody out to Thursday's meeting for Wicked Motorcycle More. We're going to be talking about, the meeting starts at 6:15. It's via Zoom, if you wanted to listen in. We're going to be talking a little bit about outreach for 1383 to some of the residents, like what those postcards will look like, what it's going to look like to our commercial groups as well. So that meeting is always lively. You can always make a public comment. So I'm hoping that people can make it out. So I also wanted to mention, I got a call about the residents, I think the city manager, from a resident, regarding the parks and some of the safety. So I think the city manager's going to talk a little bit about some of the deterioration that's been happening at the parks. But I wanted to say to the residents, feel free, please reach out to any one of us. If there's something that you see that's out of sorts, or it's something that's broken, dangerous, please, please reach out. We're only, we're only an email away, text away, you know, so that we can bring it to the city manager's, the city manager's attention and city staff's attention to help get things resolved, or at least, you know, in the queue to get, to get resolved. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I had, you know, we had a big push as a council to make sure that people register for the census and to make sure that you were counted. Currently, there's a organization, it's, I spoke at November 8th, California Citizens Redistricting Commission, which involves how California draws the line for representation. One of the things that came to my attention was, well, there's this, there's these draft maps that show congressional district change, but one of the main things was the map going from 1107 to 1102, which pushes Hercules and Panol into Solano County for the Assembly District, which moves us out of West County. I spoke against that. I think we need to go back to East Bay 1102. I want to encourage our residents, you know, we got counted, but now we need to advocate to make sure that these lines stay equitable across the Bay Area. Some of the points that I brought up were, moving to Solano County kind of pushes us out of West County. I mean, a lot of our neighboring cities in West County, we sit on JPAs together, we sit on MCE together, we sit on all these different boards where we can advocate together, which semi-changes that when we advocate on the state level to our assembly person. So, you know, moving to that 1107 map disrupts that a little bit if we go to Solano. So I, I'm going to email the city clerk. There was a, I think it was Contra Costa Herald, did on November 12th, did a great article summarizing, you know, all the different conversations that have been happening, especially in particular to the Bay Area and particularly Contra Costa. There's a lot of talk between how we got bumped into Solano. So I encourage my colleagues to also visit it as well and possibly make comment. There are going to be meetings going on for public comment on the 17th for congressional district feedback. On the 18th, it's going to be Assembly District Feedback. 19th is Senate District. The congressional, you know, is one thing I would encourage people to do some more research on. But the Assembly is a big change for us, because a lot of our regional partners in West County, it changes, you know, a little bit how we advocate at the state level. So just so you guys know, it's called, maybe I could just, I was going to send an email to the city clerk. That way, everybody can kind of access that, but maybe I could just give you guys the website. So the Contra Costa Herald one, if you go to their website, if you California Citizens Redistricting, just search there for the redistricting commission, and that article's on the 12th. And then if you, it has a series of links that'll take you to the California redraw the lines website. It shows a lot of the different links, the sample maps, what everything's kind of looking like. And the big driver to all of this is the census data, which, which we had a high turnout for in Panol. So just connecting that line between what they do with that data and how it's actually implemented. So I just want to encourage everybody to engage in that process. And just like with the parks in this town, going on record is very important. Please come out, send an email, make sure we're aware of the issues that you guys are seeing. And it goes for the same thing with a lot of these commissions. We had a lot of success with, you know, people engaging and hearing, you know, for an elected, hearing from people is critical to us making decisions. So I just want to make sure that everybody engages. So with that, Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the holidays. I'm sure we'll see, we're going to have our next meeting coming up, I think on the 4th? Oh, not the 4th. When's the next one, the 9th?
The 7th of December is Lila's birthday.
Lila's birthday, that's right. Great. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Council requests for future agenda items. Councilmember Tave, you want to keep going? You're on mute.
Technology, right? No, I don't have any future agenda items.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salimi?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so I think there have been a couple of public requests around, like what we can do regarding speed bumps and what streets deserve them. I'm sure this probably is within the Capitol Project's conversation, but I just wanted to explore. but I just wanted to explore particularly around Pinole Valley Road and Wright Avenue. Those are two streets that have come up over the last nine months several times. Was wondering if we can get a conversation about next steps or even just options on what we can do to move forward. The, the gist of it is that we, there's a lot of, I guess, citizen or public's concern with regards to speed limits on those streets and cars going too fast. So I would love a conversation about that, if we can have that, even if that's included in a different agenda item, but just identifying that particularly as the agenda item, I think would be necessary. So public.
Okay, I think we've got a study going on that would be, that would be productive to have the results of that study presented to us as council and then have that be part of the underlying discussion as to what is feasible to do related to, to to traffic or to the perception that there's, you know, speeding, speeding going on.
Gotcha. And there, you're referring to the local road safety plan? Okay, just wanted to make sure for the, for the public watching.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I would say again, you know, we, we need to have some data, underlying discussions.
Sure.
Along with, with the input that, that the public would like to make. I know that we have all gotten emails from, you know, a particular group of folks about that, so we need to understand better who else is affected.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good for me then.
Is there consensus on a presentation that, that is, that would stem from that study, that plan, and then as well, what, what can be done given identification of problems based on that?
Yes.
Thank you. City Manager Murray, is that clear enough?
So yeah, we are, you know, in the midst of preparing, a consultant is preparing a local road safety plan that will be presented to the city council. So it's, that would naturally be an opportunity to discuss some of the concerns that we've received from the public. I, yes, it's, I think, having a specific discussion about some of the key sections of the transportation network that people have raised concerns about as part of the presentation of the local road safety plan. Seems like a, a good idea, and that's, if that's the direction, happy, staff is happy to follow through on that.
There you go. Okay. Councilmember Murphy, anything else?
That's all for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, so my, my agenda item request is the following. For us to have a discussion about expanding the ordinance that we now have that relates to polystyrene products. And that translates to, so what some people consider Styrofoam. It currently prohibits use of polystyrene-based disposable foodware. And so the expansion would be to reduce, it's, it's a step toward the reduction of plastic ware used by different, different by vendors, by retailers, by restaurants, even within our city facilities associated with prepared food. It's, it's a move toward reducing that in, in our city so that we have a reduction of, well, all, all that we see that damages environment and protects, in order to protect our water waste and to promote environmental sustainability, reduce waste overall. So that would be my, my agenda item request to have eventually have our municipal code expanded to include the use of compostable kinds of foodware when there's prepared food involved. And we have, New York City, that will be in this direction as well. And so we have a model to follow. And along with the ordinance comparable to what was presented tonight with 1383, there would be a, a plan or timeline associated with how that ordinance would be presented to the public because it's going to affect, it will affect the restaurants and people who, who prepare food and their current use of going from plastic to something different. May I have consensus on that?
Yes, Madam.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that was clear enough. City Attorney Kasher about that or City Manager?
Yeah, understood.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Tate, you got your virtual handup?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I just remembered, you know, I was looking through my notes. A while back, we had a presentation from MCE. And I wanted to, I had asked the question, how much does Pinole contribute as a city to MCE? And we were, we were supposed to get that data back. And then, you know, what, how does Pinole fit into the big picture with MCE and the dollar amounts that are associated with what we're paying out and, and what we're receiving back? And it just kind of triggered, you know, me to look through my notes when we were talking about the ZEV question. I'd like to get that report. I'm not sure if that's something that we would want to discuss openly in a council meeting. But just, just from my mind, how much money and what that commitment looks like from, from Pinole? What does 90% of Pinole opting into MCE look like and dollar-wise? I don't know if that's something that maybe the city manager could, could just check with MCE and then report out to the rest of the council.
I imagine they, I imagine they have, it's a public, is it a public or a private entity? Councilmember Murphy, MCE considered public or private or a combination? What I'm thinking about is they probably have some sort of annual report that will provide this information to us. And if we can get a hold of that, let it out and reflect, also their auditing documents, I'd reflect.
I'm, so I'm happy to follow up with them about that. I don't consider that new direction to staff because that was a question the council already posed to MCE. So I'm happy to follow up on council's behalf to find out when that, when we can get that info.
I'm just trying to equate our commitment to the dollars, like what that looks like. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, so how, how is it going to be brought back to us? City Manager?
I'll try and acquire that info from MCE and I'll send it to the city council.
Thank you. Okay. Right, everyone. So now we're on to item E, City Manager Report.
Sure. So briefly, I've been enjoying the opportunity to get out a bit more as, you know, we've become more facile with technology and reopened a little bit. So I had the opportunity to speak at Rotary recently. Was at the Veterans Day event, which was really great. First, my first time attending that event, maintaining, you know, safe social distance outdoors, but really wonderful then. We've got a number of city events and initiatives underway that we want the community to be aware of. Of course, we're going to have our tree lighting and holiday events on Saturday, December 4th. That is going to include a pilot program in which we're going to invite all K through 12 schools in Pinole to bring a tree and decorate that in places, a community corner and a place that is visible. I think that'll be a fun pilot project. We'll see how that goes. As you may have seen, our downtown trees, our street trees are partially lit with the, with the temporary loan of a bucket truck will be completing the lighting of the canopies. We are going to have a community meeting on December 8th to present some preliminary design options for the replacement bridge on San Pablo Avenue. So Pinole residents are going to get information about that. I think it's particularly going to be of interest to folks in that local area. We are conducting our, creating our local road safety plan. There's information on that on the city's website. So we encourage all residents who have thoughts or concerns about our transportation network and problem areas to contribute their thoughts to that process. We've had a lot of dialogue at the council about litter at on-ramps and off-ramps. And on the freeway, staff is meeting with Caltrans counterparts in early December to talk about what their regular cleaning schedule is and how they might be able to contain litter from the freeways and keep it from spilling into the city. And finally, as Councilmember Tate mentioned, there's been some deterioration in the rubber playing surface at Pinole Valley Park in the children's area. It does deteriorate over time with wear. There are some pockets where the surface is, has been degraded and there are some small holes. We do have patching material for that, so Public Works crews will go out and patch those holes. It's that repair material performs better when supplied in warmer weather, so we'll put it on. I don't think it will last super long, but we'll be looking for a permanent solution as part of the capital improvement plan. I just wanted to mention that. It is a situation in which case small, in which case small holes appear and then people play with those holes, in those holes, pick at the holes, and the holes grow. And so it's a kind of a recurring maintenance issue. Those rubberized playing surfaces are still safer and cleaner than sand or wood chips, but they do require maintenance. So I just want to let you know that we'll be working on that. And to echo Councilmember Tate's call, if members of the community have any questions or concerns about city facilities, please feel free to email me. There's also contact information for our maintenance staff on our website, and we'll make sure it gets to the right department heads to address. And that's it for me.
And City Manager Murray, the meeting on December 8th, can you please repeat the purpose of the meeting?
Yeah, so we're underway in designing and eventually replacing the bridge on San Pablo Avenue that leads from Pinole to Hercules. We've contracted with some design engineers who are coming up with some preliminary design options that include things like the alignment of the roadway, the size of the bridge, the type of bridge. And they've done some initial feasibility assessments and have a couple of different conceptual designs that they want to get some public input on. There are some residents who live in that area who are particularly concerned about the potential future alignment of that roadway. So we want to give them some opportunities relatively early in the process to weigh in on the options. We'll be sharing that information. Ultimately, the city council of Pinole will be making a decision about the design of that before the construction award is approved. So this is still very early in the stage, but we did want to provide a residence of the area with some idea of where the design might be heading and get their input.
Thank you. In that spirit of, of neighborliness, similar to the bucket truck discussion that we had earlier, would you kindly, if you haven't already done so, share with your counterpart in Hercules so that information about that meeting is, is extended to council members there and then the residents that also will be affected by, by this big bridge project and are most interested in keeping current with what's going on? Thank you so much.
We certainly will do so. So we coordinated with Hercules staff on the setting of the date of this event. Residents in Hercules that live near that bridge will receive a mailer. And so it's really for the benefit of the Hercules residents as well as the Pinole residents who are going to be most affected. So certainly we'll be letting them know.
Thank you. And also thank you about contacting, that staff is contacting Caltrans and trying to get a better sense as to when they are out. I know it's an endless, endless job to try to clean up those on and off ramps, but we do need it. And I also know that in other cities, the more Caltrans hears from the members of the public, not just from staff, but from members of the public directly, that there will be more reasons of understanding that residents, residents don't like that for various reasons. Thank you very much, everyone. And City Attorney, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report. Just want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday next week.
Thank you for doing that. And yes, reminding us there are some, some holiday coming up. I hope everyone stays safe and thinks of at least something before. And I thank you for having us all be part of your evening tonight and all your works, staff, members of the public for joining us. And I will adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of December 7th in remembrance of Camber Swartz. Have a good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.